Thank you councillors. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? We have a full house today. No need to move a motion for acceptance of apologies. Lord Mayor, motion of condolence please.
Thank you Mr Chair. Before proceeding with the formal business of today, I would like to pay tribute to former councillor Brian Hallinan. Accordingly, in view of former councillor Brian Hallinan's service to Brisbane, I move that the council extends sincerest and deepest sympathies to the family and friends of the late Brian Hallinan and pay tribute to him for his dedicated service to the city and to the people of Brisbane.
Seconded Chair. Motion is being moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Cassidy that we extend our condolences to the family and friends of Brian Hallinan. Lord Mayor.
Thank you Mr Chair. I rise today with great sadness to speak to this condolence motion for former councillor for the Gap Ward, Brian Hallinan, who passed away last week at the age of 89. Brian was an integral part of the team under Sally Anne Atkinson as Lord Mayor on this side of politics, the Liberal Party. He was first elected to council in 1982 for the Gap Ward, one of a few wards that has held its name over the last few decades. He remained a councillor until his retirement in 1997. Brian had an enormous passion for Brisbane's environment, parks and our natural assets. He also had plenty of experience during his 15 years at council as well. He was the Chair of the Works Committee, served as the Chair of Council and was a member of the Transport Finance, Water Supply, Sewage and Planning Committees as well. It was actually Brian who initially advocated to then Lord Mayor Sally Anne Atkinson for the purchase of the very first parcel of bushland, which later became part of a wider programme, the Bushland Acquisition Programme, and that was out in the western suburbs. During his, where the bushland is, during his council career, Brian also had the vision and foresight to create Save Our Waterways Now, known as SONE, in the 1993-94 year along with his local community. SONE is a well-known catchment organisation working to restore the habitats and creeks and waterways in Inogra, Ithaca, Fish Creeks in Brisbane's north and west. I want to pass on my appreciation on behalf of the team for the enormous contribution that Brian made to our city, one that certainly changed it for the better and one that started something major when it comes to the birth of the Bushland Acquisition Programme, one that will and has left a permanent positive legacy on our city. There have been now more than 4,000 hectares of land protected under the Bushland Acquisition Programme across the city and it could be argued that that maybe would not have happened if it wasn't for Brian's advocacy and starting that project off. I also want to say that we all know elected politics and the business we're in is a tough business and it is always made easier to deal with the demands that we're under in these challenging roles if you have great personal partnerships. And Brian had that with his wife Coral. Many former colleagues have told me of the great partnership between Brian and Coral and the great support between them and that is something absolutely critical in the job that we do and I want to thank the whole family for supporting Brian in that role, particularly Coral. So on behalf of my team, I want to extend our thoughts and prayers to Coral and his extended family and friends. Thank you Mr Chair.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Further speakers councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. I rise to contribute to the motion of condolence for Brian Hallinan on behalf of Labor councillors in here and we add our thoughts and condolences for the passing of former Alderman and councillor Brian Hallinan. Brian represented the Gap Ward as we've heard from the Lord Mayor for more than a decade, well 15 years in fact, from 82 through to 97 and Chair of the councillor, Chair of this council for two of those years in the Atkinson administration. Brian was passionate about the local environment as we've heard and in 1993 established the community-based organisation SONE, Save Our Waterways Now, which is still advocating for our local waterways, still thriving today and they continue to do amazing on-ground work to rehabilitate Brisbane's creeks, gullies and catchments. So that legacy will certainly live on in Brian's name. So on behalf of the Labor team here in City Hall, we offer our deepest condolences and sympathies to Brian's family, friends during this difficult time. May he rest in peace.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. Further speakers councillor Toomey.
Thank you Chair. I also too rise to give my condolence to the passing of Brian Hallinan. As councillors, we enter public office with the ambition of making our patch better. Brian not only had significant impact on the ward, he also reshaped the fabric of our city and was the genesis of change which we are still reaping to this day. Brian was the councillor of the Gap Ward as we've heard from 1982 to 1997 and served under three Lord Mayors, including Brisbane's first female Lord Mayor Sally Anne Atkinson. Brian was born in Townsville in February 1932. He began his working life as a cabinetmaker and joiner, spending his early years in the mountains of Papua New Guinea managing a jail. On his return from Papua New Guinea, he joined Brett's Timbers at Newmarket and was there for the 74 flood. Post 74 flood, Brian was given the responsibility of moving Brett's timber yard off-site to safer grounds. He then took on the responsibility of creating a, for a very short term, a shelter where he passed on trade skills to those less fortunate and those down on his luck. Intending only to be a short time, it ended up being eight years and members of the community walked away with additional skills in timberwork, motor mechanics and electrical repairs. Brian had joined the Liberal Party many years before entering council and was a true believer in giving a hand up rather than a hand out. He was elected as Alderman for the Gap with just a margin of 1% in 1982. He spent his early years in council, learning the local law and became Chairman of Council. During his time here, he was also Chairman of Works and Chairman of Water Supply and Sewage. Brian was ahead of his time. Drawing on his learned experiences in Papua New Guinea around sustainable communities, he took a different view to council's treatment of creeks at the time. The council treated creeks as in similar fashion to gutters and drains. They were cleaned of vegetation and silt to allow the water to flow away faster. Brian saw the lack of stability in our creeks as a problem and formed the view that our creeks should be more than drains and stormwater avenues and wanted to restore the waterways across Brisbane. He teamed up with another local, Trevor Ozan, a horticultural lecturer to form Save Our Waterways Now. It's a community-based organisation that was originally auspiced by Men of the Trees in 1994. They did this to address the declining condition of the Inogra Creek catchment. Brian's efforts to restore Inogra Creek catchment was described by, was described in the Senate along with SONE as real Australians doing real positive things for this country. Brian proposed to then Lord Mayor Sally Anne Atkinson that the city needed to save the bushland at risk for a couple of reasons. One, the city's trees needed to breathe, we needed to preserve our lungs and residents needed space to enjoy the local outdoors. This was the genesis of the Bushland levy. The first block was purchased under the scheme at Whitehead Road in the Gap at the foothills of Mount Cotha. Sally Anne at the time had already introduced a local plan specifically to protect Mount Cotha in the city plan. However, Labor councillors at the time thought it was not needed and a wasteful use of resources and money. Thank goodness the administration at the time persisted. Sally Anne's and Brian's lasting legacy has been built on, as we've heard from the Lord Mayor, with almost 40% of our native bushland being protected for future generations. Today, Brian's dream of restoring habitat to our creeks and leafy green suburbs across Brisbane is all but realised. All administration councillors, councils pardon me, following Brian's time in office supported the idea of restoring habitat and this is a testament to the man's dream and his fortitude to follow through. Brian was also an avid cyclist. He knew the benefits of cycling as recreation and sport and also as a mode of commuting. He built Brisbane's first bikeway from School Road to Walton Bridge along Inogra Creek in the Gap to take advantage of the flat terrain and the separation of cyclists from the growing traffic on Waterworks Road. It's now known as the Brian Hallinan Bikeway. Hundreds of kilometres of bikeway have been contributed by council threading across our city and suburbs since and thousands of commuters using them daily, not knowing that it all started in the inner-city suburb of the Gap. A true thinker, a lover of nature, a gentleman to the last, Val Brian Hallinan, 1932 to 1921. And if the chamber will indulge me, I have a few tributes from some local residents. John Abbott is the current president of SONE and John writes, "SONE has lost its founder, Brian Hallinan. Brian was a visionary, a thinker who recognised the value of the natural environment and believed in the value of community action. He combined these two values when he established SONE in 1994 as a model of catchment management. At that time, he was well ahead of the rest of Brisbane City Council and most of the community. Brian has remained actively involved in SONE for over 27 years. He loved to tell stories of visiting dignitaries and new members about how this all started. He will greatly be missed, he and his stories and enthusiasm and humour." And also from Bob Whitman, an original founder of SONE. "So sorry to hear that news. Brian was a wonderful Alderman and a sterling contributor to both the city and his ward. SONE owes its existence and strength to him and he will be sorely missed. As someone who had to do a lot with him in the foundation days, I shall miss him as a mentor, a guide and a mate." Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Toomey. Further speakers councillor Adams.
Thank you Chair. I just rise to give my condolences to the Hallinan family and to reflect on behalf of my family, thank you, reflect on behalf of my family for the great man that Brian Hallinan was. As we heard, he was here in council from 1982 to 1997 and my mother was here from 1985 to 1997. On behalf of Alderman Gal Chacony and myself, I have to say he is an absolute gentleman, friendly and welcoming to everybody, was very forthcoming with advice when I got the Chair of Council just over 10 years ago and how he dealt with issues while he was sitting in the chair and we had the great opportunity to have that photo with many of us as Chairs of Council with him just recently in the last 12 months as well, which was lovely to catch up with him there. Mum said to say thank you Brian for everything you did. You are help to all but you're also a help to new councillors and you help them find their way through the circular corridors of City Hall when they were very new to it and that will always be remembered. Best of wishes and our thoughts and memories with a carol and the family. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Further speakers councillor Wines.
Thank you Mr Chair. I just rise to also make a contribution to this condolence motion for our great friend, Brian Hallinan. And Brian was my friend, it was, it's a privilege to be able to say that. I met him many years ago in my first campaign for the Inogra Ward. He came from Sanford at the time, so he'd actually retired to Sanford. He and Coral had retired to a place that the kids owned out in Sanford and he came in to Inogra, which wasn't far from there at the time, to help out and I really do appreciate his counsel and support through that time. He was himself a very experienced councillor who had gone through, who had gone through the full range of electoral experiences. He started a number of traditions that Gap councillors have all adhered to, being deeply committed to Save Our Waterways Now, being deeply committed to cycleways. It's a feature of Brian, Geraldine and councillor Toomey. Also, another feature that has not been touched on is that Brian also at his first election won his seat by a very, very small margin and then built it up to over 16% over 15 years, a feature that he shares with Geraldine App and I trust will also be shared by councillor Toomey in time. It's a feature of that community. Brian was always a really good and fun company and the last time I saw him was, it was earlier this year, I think it was February, we'd all gone to lunch and it had been an outing because we'd all been locked away for the COVID period of last year and some other time and he was out, we were down having lunch together, there was about six of us and he started pulling out photos from the old days and there was a photograph that he was particularly proud of, of when he met Princess Diana. The issue of course is he's pointing at the back of his own head saying, see that, that's me and they couldn't see his face. But, but he was, you know, always, always great company. His, you know, he was always very generous with his advice. He too provided a lot of advice on how to chair the council meeting and I was always very welcome. He once chipped me for putting magnets on my car, he said, just get a more interesting car, because when he was councillor, he drove a particularly large white four-wheel drive, which he insisted that everybody in the Gap Ward knew was his car and would wave to that car as it drove past. I pointed out that it's a lot more likely to see large four-wheel drives in the Gap and the other maybe in 1982, but, but that was something that he believed. There were two things that, his contribution to SONE, Bushland Preservation have been, and bikeways have been well noted today. Another item that he can be credited with is he proposed and successfully had moved the proposal for 40km per hour school zones through the LGAQ conference that he credited as the beginning of the process, the commonplace 40km an hour in school zones. And he also said that when he was Chair of the Works Committee, he attempted to make it so that ladies wouldn't get their heels caught in the tiles in the mall, in Queen Street Mall and I think, I think that, I think that was a vision that took some decades to achieve, but that was something that he did, he did hope to do. Look, Brian, I know will be missed by many. Councillor Toomey, I had only but a handful of people I'm sure are saddened by his passing and we wish nothing but the best to him and to his family and to Coral at this time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wines. Any further speakers? Lord Mayor. Councillors, the motion before us is that council extends its sincerest and deepest sympathies to the family and friends of the late Brian Hallinan and pay tribute to him for his dedicated service to the city and the people of Brisbane. All in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you councillors. Confirmation of minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,663rd meeting held on Tuesday the 2nd of November 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,663rd meeting of council held on the 2nd of November 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillors, we have public participants today. I'd like to call on please Mr Peter Hallam, who'll address the council on the benefits of his logical location strategy. Mr Hallam's coming to the microphone. Mr Hallam, you can stand or sit according to your wish. Microphone will be turned on and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak today and I acknowledge the fine work that you do. My name is Peter Hallam and I live in Salisbury. I've been a baller maker, a small landscape business and I've studied to become an independent support carer. I know my community, I'm passionate about our local people and the environment and this is why I think we live in the greatest city in the world and want it to keep that way. Our neighbourhood is a friendly thoroughfare on the south side and we politely wave people through in traffic. Our relaxed and welcoming neighbourhood is an important greenbelt recognised as such by council since 1934. We have a protected tree canopy from Rocky Waterhole Creek at Tuie Forest in the north-east to Oxley Creek Catchment in the south-west. Locals have fought very hard to preserve this canopy over many years. SOS, Save Our Salisbury, was formed in response to anger, residents' anger about three to five-storey apartments next to our traditional suburban blocks and I recognise the many other groups who are aligned about the neighbourhood plan and in its proposed form. I believe the draft neighbourhood plan is destined to fall short, however, I believe it can succeed if the input of local residents is included in the journey. There is a depth of local knowledge involved and historian Dr Neville Book of Brisbane Southside History Network is advising us on this. My logical location strategy involves redirecting proposed development from the residential areas to vacant industrial warehouses set at three levels. For example, the World War II ammunition precinct located north and south of Evans Road is an opportunity for high-quality development combined with a variety of commercial, entertainment and employment uses with some medium-density residential zones. This could easily be achieved by a material change of use application while retaining the unique history and character of the area. Do we want to, do we want to preserve our history? Yes, we do. This could integrate with the community, providing opportunities for locals to mix, work and relax together. As per the vision of Suburban Futures in reimagining Salisbury a few years back, such a development would be less intrusive to the community in this location and is more likely to gain support, community support. However, these sites have been earmarked as industrial warehouses. In 1930s, this was heavy engineering, heavy manufacturing, but those days have gone and as a baller maker, those jobs were gone in the 80s. Maintaining this industrial warehouses in this area would be a missed opportunity. De-zoning this industrial land, which is mostly underutilised and abandoned, for high-quality mixed use instead would benefit the community by providing local opportunities of employment and housing supply. Such a regeneration, such a regeneration plan would enhance the amenities of the suburb by providing off-street parking for both residents and business. Walkability and mixing together could be encouraged with a variety of ground-level retail dining, cafes, small business, history trails and public parks. Balcony and rooftop gardens could be encouraged in these buildings in order to enjoy views of Tuie Forest, the tree canopy and the city. Suburban Futures have offered to collaborate in community workshops to explore this plan to consider the requirements of existing residents, businesses and others who might want to invest here.
Mr Hallam, I'm sorry, your time has expired. The Lord Mayor or councillor Allen, would you like to respond? Please take a seat.
Thank you Mr Chair and thank you Mr Hallam for coming in today and presenting to council. My name's councillor Adam Allen, I'm the Civic Cabinet Chair for City Planning and Suburban Renewal and certainly from your presentation today, I'm really conscious of the passion you have for your area and more importantly, the depths that you've gone to sort of consider the alternatives. The reality for Brisbane is that we are a growing city and we, we need to accommodate a larger population. Under the South East Queensland Regional Plan, Brisbane City Council is required to provide another 188,000 dwellings to support 386,000 new residents by 2041, so that's the challenge we have. And Brisbane is in a somewhat unique situation in that we don't have a lot of land for greenfield development, so by definition it includes infill development where we're replacing land that's already been developed with, with something else typically residential housing of some type. And so as we sort of look at how we're going to plan for this growth, we go through our neighbourhood planning process and what neighbourhood planning allows us to do, and as you're aware, we've got a neighbourhood plan live out there where you live. It allows us to get the right mix of housing in the right locations, get the right configuration to support economic development and jobs in the area and also ensure that we get the right infrastructure and public transport and things in place. So in the context of the neighbourhood plan that's happening out your way at the moment, the Nathan Salisbury Maruka neighbourhood plan, that process is up and running. We are looking at that area as a growth node, it's been a growth node or identified as a growth node for over a decade now. We are looking at some of the strategic assets that are out there, you've got a couple of major roads on each side, you've got a couple of train stations, so that infrastructure lends itself to increased density in your area. There are some great opportunities, we think, to breathe some new life into areas that are perhaps need a little bit of regeneration and you've touched upon it today. The thinking at this stage is that we've developed a draft strategy which is available on council's website. There's been a significant amount of discussion and feedback. To date, we've received 1,500 submissions on that draft strategy. What will happen now is we will look to actually prepare a draft neighbourhood plan. If you haven't provided a submission already, I would really encourage you to do it. I think the ideas that you've presented today are truly relevant. You mentioned that you were chatting with the team from Suburban Futures. We also have a relationship with them and are conscious of the view they take on these kinds of opportunities to rejuvenate remnant industrial land, so I would certainly encourage you to, to submit something and if you've got something that's more fulsome that you could provide, we would love to see it. So the timing on it at this stage is that the draft neighbourhood plan is in preparation. It will go down to the state government for, for review and consultation. At this stage, we don't have a confirmed date on when that's likely to be returned, but it'll probably be mid to late next year, so there's still plenty of opportunity for you to submit and feed into this process. I think you've got a terrific amount to offer based on what you've said today and I appreciate you coming in today. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Allen. Thank you Mr Hallam. Make sure that that document gets through or a version of it. Make sure that that document gets through, or a version of it, thank you very much. Orderly, we are now going to hear from Mr Chris Lindott, who will address the chamber on fire pits and the proposed changes to the Health Safety and Amenity Local Law twenty twenty-one. Orderly, if you can show Mr Lindott in, please. Mr Lindott, you may stand or sit according to your preference, you have five minutes once the microphone is turned on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to address council. My name is Chris Lindott, a member of Clean Air Winham, a group of residents working to improve air quality in the Winham area. Our mantra is educate ourselves and inform others. I will speak to the proposed new laws allowing the use of fire pits and braziers. All councillors have a copy of the Clean Air Winham submission and supporting information opposing these new laws. This position is supported by Asthma Australia, Lung Foundation, Doctors for the Environment, Queensland Health amongst others. Around twelve percent of Queensland's population suffer respiratory issues, which translates to about three thousand, sorry, three hundred thousand Brisbane residents. The young and elderly represent about one in four residents. Aside from the obvious risks to health for the community, other aspects of the proposed new law are unclear. For example, the draft document does not explain how residents can determine if and to what extent smoke from their fire pit might cause smoke impact to other residents. Smoke will drift significant distances, potentially impacting on residents who are unable to identify the source. Unlike other nuisances like light or noise, the source of which could be readily identified, monitored and terminated with a flick of a switch, smoke has no controllability. It is unclear how council intends to monitor and manage complaints about smoke from fire pits. Many residents speak with Clean Air Winham but are hesitant to complain about their neighbours' behaviour for fear of reprisals. During the fifteenth June council meeting, it was stated that new laws will align Brisbane and neighbouring councils. Research of Ridlands, Ipswich and Moreton Bay councils indicated that none appear to have fire pit policies. Moreton Bay stipulates properties must be larger than three thousand square metres can only operate a fire between seven AM and dusk. Smaller properties can only light fires for cooking. This hardly compares with Brisbane's high-density living in suburban areas. Another statement advised that council representatives met with Lung Foundation and agreed to take their concerns on board with provisions within the new law to prevent smoke impact. It's difficult to understand how this will be achieved and how smoke impact will be quantified. In discussion with the Lung Foundation, I can advise on behalf of its many members with lung conditions that it urge council not to allow fire pits. Clean Air Winham undertook a twelve- or one-year citizen science project with Department of Environment to monitor air quality in the Winham area. As a result, it is very familiar with particulate matter, which are the particles invisible to the human, to the naked eye created when anything is burnt. PM ten refers to particulates ten micrometres and smaller, PM two point five, two point five micrometres and smaller. Air quality is measured in micrograms per cubic metre over twenty-four hours. In September, the World Health Organisation updated its air quality guidelines. PM ten lowered to fifty to forty-five micrograms per cubic metre, PM two point five lowered from twenty-five to fifteen, which is almost fifty percent reduction. Professor Lydia Morawsko, who is based at KUGT, was a member of the WHO Air Quality Committee. Lydia featured in Courier-Mails Weekend Magazine and is in Time Magazine's list of the one hundred most influential people of twenty twenty-one. Lydia is just down the road. Operating fire pits will increase the levels of PM ten and PM two point five. Both are hazardous to the human health, as once in the lungs they can affect respiratory performance. There is now significant evidence that particulates of one micrometre or even, or less are even more dangerous. Whilst the twenty-four hour average might not exceed the WHO guidelines, highly elevated of short-term exposure to fires has the potential to permanent damage lungs. There's other impacts on smoke which can permeate clothing, furnishing, spoil washing and leave soot. There's also a risk of wildlife, especially birds and insects, and the risk of embers creating fires in the local bush. Alternatives to burning wood in fire pits are available, including gas or ethanol, both of which generate less smoke, are safer, much easier to control. So to summarise, the last line of Brisbane City Council's environmental policy states prevent pollution at its source and continually improve council's response to pollution incidents to minimise their impact and occurrence. The ongoing use of fire pits appears to be in direct conflict with this. Councillors, before you vote on the proposed new laws, Clean Air Winham encourages you to, one, review all the fire pit related submissions, which is understood to be over forty. Consider the long-term health consequences of allowing fire pits. And, third, consider the additional fire pits likely to be purchased over the next ten years, when at which time Brisbane will be hosting the Olympic Games in July. Most of you will recall when it was common to see a band of grey-brown smog despoil the city at winter time.
Mr Lindott, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking councillor Davis, would you like to respond? Please take a seat.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, Mr Lindott, for coming in today and sharing your thoughts around braziers and fire pits. My name's Tracy Davis, I'm the Civic Cabinet Chair of Environment, Parks and Sustainability, for which fire pits and braziers falls under my portfolio. As you would be aware, in September last year, council undertook a trial to consider the community's feedback on fire pits and braziers in the community, and you may be interested to know that it was one of the largest feedback, amount of feedback that we had received on particular issues that we had put out for comment. In fact, we had six thousand responses on Facebook, over a thousand letters and emails and nearly two thousand petition signatures, and a great many of those, in fact, about ninety-five percent of the people that contacted us through that process, were supportive of braziers and fire pits in the community. However, I acknowledge the concerns that some organisations, like you have mentioned, the Lung Foundation, Asthma Foundation and indeed your own group, Clean Air Winham, provided through that process. And please be assured that it was considered and is still considered as we put the final bits together on the hassle on the local law. Council does really take this quite seriously when there is a complaint made about smoke. Councillor Kim Marks, whose area looks after compliance, her officers respond very, very quickly to any concerns that come in. We do start with an education approach, which is to advise people, you know, what their obligations are and also to be very mindful of their neighbours if it is impacting on them. I would also, I would also say that we do encourage as council that people who do have fire pits and braziers to have those sorts of clean wood types, gas, ethanol and charcoal that you referred to in your presentation, to minimise smoke impacts, and we in fact have those suggestions on the website. During Covid, of course, many more people were spending time at home and looking for more things to see and do, and that's in part why it was important to respond to the community view that fire pits and braziers may be something that they would like to see in their homes, and that's why the trial went ahead. So thank you very much for coming in. Again, please be assured that all feedback is being and has been considered, and I really appreciate you coming in today and sharing your thoughts with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Lindott. Thank you, thank you very much. Councillors, the next item on the agenda is question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Last week, the leader of the opposition moved an urgency motion asking council to commit to better bus services for Polara residents in my ward. Can you outline the history of the Shrinna Council's action in seeking to deliver public transport for residents of Polara? And are you aware of any impediments restricting Brisbane City Council in providing bus services to this growing community?
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Owen for the question. I'd like to start by acknowledging how tenacious councillor Owen is on this particular issue in her ward. She's been incredibly active and instrumental in working towards a solution to deliver better public transport outcomes for the suburb of Polara. As local councillor, she couldn't be doing any more, pushing any harder, and that includes meeting personally with the Deputy Director General of the State Government's Translink Division. In fact, Chair councillor Owen has been so tenacious, so passionate in her advocacy that she has been congratulated and celebrated by none other than her local federal member, Member for Oxley, Milton Dick MP. And he said the following in a letter that he sent to Matt Longland, the former head of Translink before Matt's departure midway through this year. He said, "I'm aware that councillor Angela Owen Taylor has been advocating for additional services and I join her calls for these improvements as a matter of priority. It is in the best interest of our shared constituency that we ensure resident safety and make these changes to the current services." Now, many things can be said about bus services in Polara, Chair, but what cannot be said is that councillor Owen hasn't been the strongest, the most consistent and the most forceful advocate for their improvement. Now, we know that there is a need for better bus services in Polara. It's undergone significant development in recent years and the demand for more public transport has increased dramatically. You only have to jump on the journey planner and calculate the journey from the CBD to Polara to see how poorly serviced the suburb is. Some trips are ninety minutes long and involve two point three kilometre walks. That isn't good enough and we're very conscious of that. That's why council's been doing significant work in planning for service improvements to Polara. But before I dive into the work that council has already undertaken, I can't ignore the wording of councillor Cassidy's motion last week, which was fundamentally flawed. Chair councillor Cassidy gleefully proposed that Brisbane City Council commit to better bus services for Polara residents. Now, councillor Cassidy knows very well that the state government has overall responsibility for Brisbane's public transport network, including approvals for and funding of new bus services. Council cannot unilaterally deliver new services. Now councillor Cassidy is fully aware of this, but that's okay, I'm happy to go through the motions.
Councillor Johnston, please.
Play the game, but I don't think he'll be so happy when I lay out the facts, Chair. And I acknowledge the screaming and the screeching on the other side of the chamber, because they don't like it when I lay out the facts for them. Now, council has been working exhaustively with the state government for some time to come up for a solution in Polara, and let's be clear, who is dragging the chain? Council has now submitted four business case options to the state government with options for improving bus services in Polara. The first business case that council submitted for their consideration was for a rail feeder service to Oxley Station, submitted in May twenty twenty, rejected by the state government. This solution would have required quite a bit of money, which the state government advised was not feasible given their financial constraints. The second business case that this council submitted to the state government for their consideration was based on a direction from Translink themselves. This option, back in February twenty twenty-one, proposed the extension of the one-one-seven route. Council estimated that this option, the journey length between the city and Polara would have been one and a half hours, which we did not consider an acceptable outcome. So again, council got back, working and looking at other possibilities. So the third business case was submitted in August this year. This option proposes the improvement, extension and realignment of the existing one-two-six service, which, given the state's budget constraints, we think is the best option in terms of customer outcomes. The service currently operates from Acacia Ridge to the Sunnybank Shopping Centre via Coopers Plains Train Station. The business case also proposes to double the number of trips this service completes each day. Now, this would have provided a connection to the shopping centre at Sunnybank, high-frequency bus services, including Buzz services at Sunnybank and the Old Tandy Rail Station rocket services at Heathwood, so overall, pretty good outcome. Not a perfect solution, but the best we can hope for, given the budget constraints that have been placed on this project. So council is waiting to hear the state government's formal decision on this option, but what we have heard is that they would like to see us consider a fourth option with reduced costs. Now, council has taken that direction and worked on yet another option, and we recently submitted that. Unfortunately, it's really difficult to develop an effective transport solution for a suburb that far out of the city with such a limited budget. In council's view, this last option simply wouldn't provide enough services, it wouldn't give an effective level of service for Polara residents, it'd be a poor customer service outcome, and council's made it very clear in their submission that we made last week that we do not support the proposal. It's very disappointing, but it's not surprising that Labour councillors have chosen to play politics with this issue. As councillor Cassidy knows, new bus services need the stamp of approval and funding from the state government, because the absence of services from Polara certainly isn't a lack of commitment on council's behalf to deliver them. We are not prepared to politicise this issue because every day we're focused on the solutions, working with the state government to develop them and delivering outcomes for Brisbane.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, your Brisbane app is costing rate payers just under four point...
Silence, please. Allow the question to be heard in silence, please.
I'll start again, Chair. Lord Mayor, your Brisbane app is costing rate payers just under four point five million dollars, and the vast majority of that money is being spent purely on advertising and promoting the app. The app has received some shocking reviews from residents, and here are just a few I'll read out for you. Not sure what the point of this app is, downloaded it but found it was pretty much Google. Another one, the app has been crashing. Another one, search functions are poor, and here's my favourite, Lord Mayor. I'm very disturbed that there's not enough money to fix footpaths, but there was...
Councillors, allow the question to be heard, please.
The Lord Mayor thinks this is funny. The Lord Mayor's just said, Chair, that he thinks residents' reviews of this app are a joke.
Lord Mayor, allow the question to be said, please.
I think he's a little touchy on this subject, Chair. And I'll read out that final, that final review again for the LMP to hear it. I'm very disturbed that there's not enough money to fix footpaths, but there was four point five million dollars for an app that does nothing more than Google. So my question, Lord Mayor, do you think spending nearly four point five million dollars on this app is what Brisbane residents really want?
Lord Mayor.
What an interesting question, Mr Chair, because every dollar spent on this app is a dollar spent supporting local business. It's a dollar spent supporting our community. It's a dollar spent supporting Brisbane. Now, can you imagine this? Picture this.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
Picture this. The state government...
Councillor Cassidy, please.
Picture this. The state government launches their latest tourism advertising campaign for Queensland, and then the opposition says, "This is an outrageous waste of money!" That is exactly the same logic we are hearing from those opposite. This is all about supporting our local community and business at a time when they're doing it tough with free advertising. We're giving local businesses free advertising to support them, particularly the type of businesses that have done it the toughest in this period. The real question, Mr Chair, is why is Labour so hateful of local business? Why is Labour so lacking in support for local business? And it's interesting, because the community has taken this app up with great interest. As of yesterday, there's been a hundred and thousand, a hundred and eight thousand five hundred and fifty downloads, there are thousands of businesses appearing in the app, and it's interesting, because councillor Cassidy talked about some feedback on the app. Now, apart from the fact that someone in his office clearly wrote that last feedback thing, let's have a look at the rating of the app in the App Store. Now, last time I checked, the Brisbane app was rated three point eight stars out of five, three point eight out of five. Now, okay, how does that compare to other well-known apps, you may ask? Well, well, Snapchat, three point six stars. Our app is more popular than Snapchat. Tinder, three point seven stars. Our app is more popular than Tinder. Stan, three point five stars. But guess what?
Councillor Strunk, please.
As we go down the list. The flybys app, two point four stars. The Queensland Government's check-in app, two point two stars, two point two stars. And Facebook, one of the most commonly downloaded apps in the world, two stars, two stars. So thank you councillor Cassidy for pointing out the reviews. We've had fantastic reviews and we've had fantastic downloads, and guess what? The people at Brisbane are taking this app up with excitement, and they're also just as excited as the business owners of Brisbane who are appreciating that council is doing something, the Shrinna Council is doing something, to support them. It's outrageous that the opposition thinks it's not okay to support local business, because that's exactly what we're doing. Every dollar spent on this app is a dollar spent supporting local business. And it's a dollar spent supporting local business like Capulet and Co on Brighton Road in Sandgate. Now, councillor Hutton was out and about in that part of the city just recently, and she popped into Capulet and Co to... popped into Capulet and Co to have a chat to them and she asked them whether they knew about the Brisbane app. And they said it was absolutely fantastic and they had customers coming through their door because of the app. The app had directed them there and people were given great feedback about the app and they'd found out about this business because of the app. And she also spoke to Santory Organics on Seymour Street in Sandgate. And they also provided great feedback about the app and they mentioned that this business had benefited from one of our shopfront improvement grants as well. So just out of the blue, chatting to a couple of business people and unanimously good support. And, you know, if you look at businesses like the Candle Pit on Fifth Avenue, once again promoting that they're on the app and promoting how good it is that this app exists. So councillor Cassidy is not only not wanting us to support business in Brisbane, he's resentful that we're supporting local business in his ward. And guess what? His local business people appreciate that we're actually doing something to support them. And so rather than talking down local business, talking down the opportunity for them to advertise themselves for free on this app and the opportunity for residents to learn more about different parts of the city and spend more in those different parts of the city, councillor Cassidy should jump on board.
Your time has expired. Further questions, councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to ask a question to councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, we recently celebrated another clean green milestone with the Brisbane River announced as the world's first resilient river. Can you please update the chamber on what this award means for a sustainable Brisbane?
Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you very much, Chair. And through you, I'd like to thank councillor Toomey for the question. Mr Chair, the Shrima Council is very proud to once again partner with the International River Foundation to deliver this year's symposium. And in September, I had the honour of representing Brisbane at the 24th Annual International River Symposium. The symposium is an ongoing opportunity to share knowledge and experience from all around the world, to talk about the importance of our rivers, waterways and what we can do to protect them. The symposium was an incredible opportunity to hear from some of the world's best experts on river and waterway health and to learn about the amazing work that other cities do across the world to help clean up their waterways. We had delegates from every state in Australia, from all around the globe, with 90 delegates turning up for the face-to-face sessions in Brisbane. And we also saw around 250 delegates joining us online. Mr Chair, the road to resilience is a complex journey and this is something that we've been working hard on for many years now. And it was very exciting to have all of our hard work recognised when Brisbane was announced as the world's first resilient river city. It's a testament to the commitment of the Shrima Council to improving the health of our waterways, because what we do today, tomorrow, this year and next, will have a lasting impact on our city and our environment for generations to come. Mr Chair, this financial year alone, we're investing more than $4 million to our natural waterway rehabilitation programme, along with a $5 million investment into the Community Conservation Partnerships Programme. And this programme supports more than 150 Habitat Brisbane and Community Catchment Groups and more than 800 wildlife conservation partners. And together, they look after more than 1,000 restoration sites right across the city. And of course, the Shrima Council is investing $100 million over 20 years to deliver a 20-kilometre transformation of Oxley Creek Corridor, with kilometres of waterways and industrial wasteland being transformed into a wetland oasis. And I know councillor Griffiths is very pleased to see work kicking off in his ward with the latest stage of this $100 million investment, with construction underway on a nearly three-kilometre Archfield Wetlands Discovery Trail, which will open in 2022. Mr Chair, becoming the world's very first resilient river city is something every resident should be very proud of. Brisbane has been globally recognised for our community's ability to respond and recover in times of drought, flood and severe storms. Our Flood Smart Future Strategy has proven highly effective in minimising the impact of flooding on people, property and infrastructure. And I know, Mr Chair, that you are very passionate about the Flood Resilient Homes Programme, in which we work with residents and communities that are impacted by frequent flooding to prepare and recover from flood events. We're also continuing our important work, partnering with other levels of government and neighbouring local councils. We're also working with traditional custodians, community groups, businesses and industries to ensure the Brisbane River is the hallmark of resilience. Mr Chair, the Lord Mayor has led the South East Queensland Council of Mayors in championing the SEQ City Deal. And a key initiative of that city deal is an ambitious plan to deliver a coordinated approach to catchment management for the Brisbane River and other major waterways throughout South East Queensland. We need all levels of government to come together and continue negotiations in good faith, so that we can get these plans moving. A bold and well-funded programme to clean up our creeks, the Brisbane River and ultimately Moreton Bay would be hugely beneficial to our region. Improving the health of our creeks, river and bay can also be an important goal in our journey towards the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. Other Olympic cities have made promises to improve the health of their waterways with varying degrees of success, but we can achieve it in the spirit of cooperation that won us the Games through continued in-the-city deal. The bold plan to reduce sediment runoff and improve the health of creeks and rivers would deliver new business and leisure benefits as well, because the Brisbane River is a big part of our city's identity. The river has shaped our urban landscape and is a defining feature of our economy and culture. The Shrima Council is continuing to deliver the biggest ever investment in our river, with millions invested in environmental programmes and waterway initiatives that will make our river healthier for future generations to enjoy.
Thank you councillor Davis. Further questions, councillor Cook. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is for the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, today, new state government guidelines were announced banning unvaccinated people from Queensland Government Buildings, including museums and libraries from December 17, or when the state hits the 80% double-dose target. Council Buildings, however, are not included in this list. Council Facilities, including libraries and the Museum of Brisbane, are frequented by some of our most vulnerable members in our community, including children and the elderly. Lord Mayor, what steps will you be taking to ensure council facilities are included in the new state government guidelines? Or will you be creating and enforcing council's own rules to ensure our community and council staff are protected from COVID-19?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, councillor Cook. Look, I haven't had the time to digest anything that has been released today by the state government, so obviously we'll take it on notice, have a look at how that might apply to council facilities and we'll obviously take advice from both the CEO and also the health advice when it comes to how we manage the situation going forward. But what I can say is, our record on this matter shows that we have, at every step of the way, worked really hard to support the community. Worked really hard. And so we've managed our facilities in a way that has helped keep people safe and we've continued, wherever possible, all of those basic services to operate, like our bus services continually being cleaned and sanitised every night, extra cleaning introduced, a whole range of extra precautions when it comes to council facilities. And so we will obviously rise to the occasion and make sure that we work with the state government and other agencies to appropriately manage the situation going forward.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions, councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, it is now just over 12 months since the opening of the Brisbane Business Hub in the Queen Street Mall. Can you update the chamber on how this hub has helped to mentor and grow Brisbane's small businesses?
Deputy Mayor.
Mr Chair, thank you very much and thank you councillor Hammond for the question, because it is a very happy day when we get to celebrate, just a couple of weeks' time, the year anniversary of the launch of the Brisbane Business Hub, because it is just another way, like the Brisbane app, but we are here making sure that we are supporting local businesses, that we are the most small-business-friendly council in Australia, if not the world. Oh, says councillor Cummings. I'm sure, I'm sure there is no one, I'll take councillor Cummings' groan as an interruption. There's no one in Winnen that likes the app, I'm sure councillor Cunningham, I'm sure. But we don't have all the levers to pull to support small business and we know there's always more to be done. We know that there's been a lot of damage to our local economy following the impact of COVID and it cannot be underestimated and I don't think it's been fully seen yet either, as we travel these very different times as well. But what we have seen is a huge change in behaviour, a change in behaviour that we haven't seen like this in our lifetime. People are doing things differently. People are running businesses differently. People are supporting businesses differently. So we had to make sure we changed and adapted to supporting these measures. Obviously, we've spoken about the fee waivers and the rent relief, $19 million worth of it, to help stimulate some of our sectors of the economy. We've looked at grants to support them as well, but all of that was not sustainable. We couldn't just keep handing out money, even though I'm sure, Lord Mayor, that is what the, through you, Mr Chair, the opposition would like to have done. So we went about bringing forward the hub, the Brisbane Hub, which is a place for Brisbane business to either work out of, network, share ideas and contacts and give advice from mentors, or just simply hang out, do some work, have some quiet time. Over a matter of months, there's been two dozen partners have come on board to help with a range of support measures, free advice, mentoring, facilitating meetings between people who've had similarities in their work or their businesses. On a regular weekday, you'll find dozens of people working out of the hub at any one time. There's always an atmosphere of business, networking and sometimes play as well. We've had the likes of Cathy Reed, James Turn from Erbus, Glenn Richards from Shark Tank, Maxine Horn, Tracey Mathes, Phil DeBella, just to name a few, on the couch for meetings with these businesses. Having access to these events are really more than just listening to the people that are talking to them. They tick a number of boxes. It's about networking, exchanging ideas, sharing business ideas, particularly from those who are most successful in their own businesses as well. And let's run through some of the numbers. 144 events and workshops over 12 months, over 4,500 attendees, 29 partners supporting the hub, from town planning firms, law firms, marketing, communication, as well as property, charity and media organisations. Our partners have helped form 46 mentors, free of charge, which have facilitated 105 one-on-one sessions. More recently, one of the outcomes of the hub and Brisbane EDA is the Women in Business Grant, where the Lord Mayor has come out of an idea from a women's networking event, I think he went to Lord Mayor, that we needed to do direct engagement in this space and support so many of the women who've stepped now into the small business space, because they can work from home, it's more flexible. As I said, changes in habit have led to opportunities as well. So it'll be ways to support their business, increase revenue, create jobs and demonstrate that their operations are sustainable. We've allocated $250,000 to make this happen, with grants up to $5,000 per business. There's been well over 100 applications that have either been submitted or are underway, which is a very encouraging figure for this grant and it demonstrates that it was obviously needed within the business community. Overall, I'm very excited about the next year of the Brisbane Business Hub and seeing what they will achieve. With the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games on our doorstep, it is the perfect time for Brisbane to position ourselves as the strongest performers from the business perspective in this country. As we navigate our way out of lockdowns, the economic growth of many sectors in Brisbane will be paramount. Property, construction, business services, health, education and of course tourism, our main number one factor when it comes to supporting those businesses in the lifestyle area for the Brisbane app as well. The team are looking forward to how they can support, promote and expand these sectors and our green and gold runway is definitely underway. I look forward to continuing to support Brisbane businesses' community for many years to come.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further questions, councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you and your LMP administration are charging residents almost $4.5 million for the Brisbane app. That costs include $285,000 to develop the app by a Melbourne company, more than $370,000 for ongoing support and development to the Melbourne-based company, $66,000 on advertising the app on buses, bus shelters and billboards, a large number of which are owned by none other than the French advertising giant and LMP donor JC Dico, over $200,000 on stickers and letterbox flyers, $206,000 on talent for the ad campaign, $420,000 on radio and TV ads, more than $60,000 on social media ads and nearly $40,000 on social media influencers. You've also budgeted another $3.2 million for more ads this financial year. Lord Mayor, a simple question, do you think this is a good use of ratepayers' money?
Lord Mayor.
You better believe it. Absolutely. Every dollar we spend on the app is a dollar supporting our local business and our local community. So absolutely, we think it's a great use of money. And I think you better check with your own team before you talk about this app in such a disparaging way, because you'll see that there's only one councillor on your side that's not on side with you and that is councillor Strunk, who was very quick to jump on board and he happened to put his face on the app, by the way, in this little thing. So he's that excited about it, he put his face on it. But he was quite happy to promote it, saying, "Brisbane City Council app, what's happening in Brisbane at your fingertips? Get it by downloading this app." And he's got the QR code. You know what? Good on you councillor Strunk. You're interested in supporting business, obviously. It's a pity that your team members are not, because this is no different, like I said before, to when the Queensland Government puts tens of millions of dollars into advertising campaigns for tourism in Queensland. This is our way of supporting local business, just like other levels of government support local business through advertising campaigns. This is something that I would never envisage Labour criticising at another level of government, yet what's happening here is really simple. It wasn't their idea, so they don't like it. It's been done by our administration, so they don't like it. They have to find some way of criticising and I think it's really poor, because in the end, if we don't have something like the app, who loses out? Local business. Local business. And so what we're doing here is promoting those opportunities, but also, this is gearing up for when we have a relaxation of restrictions and we have people who are able to travel more freely around the country. So people coming in from places like Sydney and Melbourne to actually see what they can do here in Brisbane and what local businesses they can support and what cafes and restaurants or candle stores in Sandgate that they can visit. And guess what? It's all at their fingertips, just like councillor Strunk said. So I just can't believe that someone would be so small-minded and petty to be opposed to this initiative that supports local business at a time when they're doing it tough. Just last night, I was at the Restaurant and Catering Association Awards Night and it was a celebration of an industry that had done it incredibly tough, but adapted, done things differently and survived and in some cases thrive in difficult circumstances. And I've got to say, there were a lot of people around that room last night who had ploughed tens of thousands of dollars, if not more, into their own businesses just to keep it afloat over the last 12 months to 18 months, because they have been an industry that has been hit amongst the hardest out of any industry. And that's why we very deliberately started with retail opportunities and cafes and restaurants, because they are the people that need our support the most at the moment. And so that's the first place we went to when it came to promoting local businesses on the app. And we're seeing more and more local businesses sign up. We are seeing a great level of interest and we're seeing fantastic reviews on the App Store as well. And it's interesting, because I mentioned a couple of different companies that also have rating and different apps that also have ratings on the app. So we went through, Brisbane app was at the time 3.8 stars. I mentioned Snapchat, Stan. I mentioned the Queensland Government check-in app, 2.2 stars. But if you go down the list even further, another state government app, Translink app, two stars. And the bottom of the line, the Queensland Rail app, 1.7 stars. Those apps were created with taxpayer money.
That's right.
If you want, if you want to...
Councillor Cassidy, please.
If you want to compare, you know, government apps, well, I can tell you, we're doing extremely well. We are doing extremely well, better than Snapchat, but certainly better than the 1.7 stars for the Queensland Rail app, the two stars for the Translink app and the 2.2 stars for the Queensland Government check-in app. And so, you know, stop talking down local business, stop talking down Brisbane, get on board and support the app, because guess what councillor Cassidy? Your community supports it and your businesses support it.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions, councillor MacKay?
Thanks, Chair. My chair, my question...
My chair, my question is to the Chair of Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Mogul Road corridor upgrade is now well underway. Can you please give us an update on what locals can expect to see during Stage One, as we work to improve safety while getting residents home quicker and safer?
Thank you, councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And can I also thank councillor Mackay for his ongoing and keen interest in this project that will benefit his residents in particular, but all residents of Brisbane and the western suburbs. The project is about getting people home sooner and safer, and it is a part of a partnership that we have with the federal government, who are assisting in the funding of this project, but we continue to contribute a significant amount of funds and time and our expertise to ensure that this project improves the lives of Brisbane's residents. As the council should be aware, late last month, the demolition of the car yard dealership was complete. I mean, the contract for the construction can now be awarded, and last week, it was announced that the company Giorgio was successful in receiving that contract, and will begin work very, very soon. For those who may recall, Giorgio, or whether the name seems familiar, they also did the work on the Indrapilly Riverwalk, and that was an excellent piece of infrastructure, and a group of people that we have worked with recently, and locally in that area, to deliver an excellent piece of infrastructure, and we are confident that that same company can do it again here at the Stage One of the Mogul Road corridor upgrade, the Indrapilly Roundabout portion. Can I, the demolition sites was quite interesting for those who had an opportunity to go on-site, and because of the materials used to build it, and like too many buildings in our city, asbestos was a key, I suppose, ingredient in its construction, and as a result, there was a lot of precautions taken on the site as part of its removal. So rather than using a simple demolition through explosion or through an uncontrolled removal, each portion of it was taken, and for those who are interested, there is some footage available that we can provide to you. This sort of shows a machine, not dissimilar to a dinosaur-looking thing that sort of chomps through the building, and it is quite fascinating, and that's the safe way to do it. Can I also advise the council that the location for the worksite compound has also been identified, and the early works are now being undertaken, including the identification, relocation of public utilities, survey works, road excavations, and stormwater drainage upgrades. It's the part, the portion of the project that often the public, there are always two sections, I find, in projects that the public sort of gets frustrated with, the very start and the very end. And the very start, where we're telling the work has begun, yet the site doesn't appear to have work occurring on it, and that's because a lot of the work is in fact preparatory or underground, subterranean, which is what's actually happening at this point. For interest, the other half is the final weeks when the public can see it's finished, but they can't use it just yet. That's the other part, and that's still to come, that's still to come. But that work is very important, and as the council would know, underground utilities can be very expensive to move, and the maps that show where they are aren't always as accurate as you would like them to be, and sometimes we find things that aren't necessarily there, are there when they shouldn't be, or aren't where the map would say. And these days, utilities includes not only water and sewer, electricity and communication, it's all underground. So all that has to be dealt with and moved out of sight, and that can take a great deal of time. Interestingly though, as we know, the Mogul Road corridor is a project that doesn't merely focus on the Indrapilly Roundabout project, that's merely Stage One. There's still so much more to come with this project, and I know that this financial year alone, we have identified two projects that will be completed within the corridor, as well as other works to try and operate, to make the operation of the corridor even more convenient. The first one is at the eastern end, the very beginning of Mogul Road, not far from where you would leave High Street and join Mogul Road, and it's the intersection of Whitmore Street and Mogul Road. That work is to improve the volume of vehicles that can move through that intersection. It's a controlled intersection right now, it has a set of lights. There's work being done to improve that intersection to ensure that more vehicles can move through it, through each light phasing. I mean, in particular, there'll be an adjustment to the satellites to ensure that people can turn left more easily and get more vehicles through it quickly. The other one will be works around Indrapilly State School, which is Turinga Parade, and the old West Point. Till next time.
Okay, councillor Wines, your time has expired. Before I take another question, can I please just acknowledge councillor, former councillor Geraldine Knapp, sitting in the Public Gallery, former distinguished councillor and former committee chair in this place. Thank you, good to see you, Geraldine. Councillor Cassidy.
It's definitely me.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Standards Committee, councillor Kim Marks. In the 2020-2021 financial year, your LMP administration's parking fine revenue target was thirty million dollars. This financial year, it's jumped up to more than forty-eight million dollars. That's an increase of sixty percent in one year. Council officers are working under enormous pressure to meet these obscene targets set by this LMP administration. We know of reports of council officers even finding people at 2:00 AM in suburban streets to meet these targets. Councillor Marks, what do you have to say to the residents of Brisbane that are mercilessly fined at the direction of your LMP administration?
Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to answer the question from the leader of the opposition about the parking fines. Can I state here and now, there are no targets set by this council administration for parking fines. The budget line item, as been said before, again, and again, and again, is an estimated amount, that is, the estimated amount that revenue will come in from parking fines, given the previous year's experience of parking fines. We also, you can see there in the anticipated budget for 2021 and 2122, is the expense, which is that thirty-thousand-six-hundred-and-twelve, these expenses of twenty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred, and then the following year, it's, sorry, it's twenty-eight-million-eight-hundred, and then the following year, when you're talking about it, is thirty-seven-point-seven-five-two. So you forget to take the expenses out of it. So it's not like we're making these millions and millions of dollars of profit, which you seem to alluding to. Through you, Mr Chair, I note the comment was also made about 2:00 AM findings by council officers. The reality is, a resident or councillor will ring into the contact centre to lodge a complaint about someone who's illegally parked. Traditionally, from my own personal experience, these tend to be around schools, around that school afternoon drop-off pickup time. That job is logged with the contact centre and then given to the officers to respond to. Unfortunately, as with most situations, council officers have to triage the jobs that they respond to, and I can tell you here and now, I make no apology if a council officer has gone to a potential dog attack as opposed to a parking issue. So when they do get the job, and they get to, the officers come, start their shift, they go through their job, and then if it does happen to be at 2:00 in the morning that they're out in that location, that's when they will go and investigate that potential parking complaint. As I said, I make no apologies for council officers triaging potential dog attacks and safety issues over a parking potential issue. So I just want to make very clear, also, what we need to take into account was the clear reduction in parking revenue as a result of the COVID impact, where we didn't actually have any parking at all. Residents could park quite freely in the city, as the Lord Mayor has said on a number of occasions. They can continue to ask where the six million dollars went from the postponed curbside collection. Well, that's where it went. Local businesses, people didn't have to pay for parking, that sort of stuff. So I just want to say that you just can't believe everything you read on a Labor Facebook page.
Thank you, councillor Marks. Further questions? councillor Atwood.
Thank you. My question is to the Chair of the Committee of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Lord Mayor's Youth Advisory Council held their final meeting of the year this past week. Can you please tell us more about this event, and how the Shriner Council is implementing the ideas of Brisbane's brightest young minds?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Atwood for the question, and I also thank her for being in attendance with little baby Billy, and she was a great hit with all of the young people. I'm very happy to speak on the Lord Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, which is a fantastic initiative that I've been fortunate enough to attend on a number of occasions. For those not familiar with the project, each year, Brisbane high schools across the city are invited to nominate one year-ten student to represent their school on the Lord Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, also known as LMAIC. LMAIC delegates act as representatives of their school and community, and give students across the city a platform for raising issues or sharing ideas that affect young people. This advisory council aims to develop young people as leaders, and is specifically designed to provide an opportunity for young people in Brisbane to identify issues and engage with each other in a public forum, where they are encouraged to provide feedback and give their opinion about Brisbane City Council policies, local laws, services, and programs that affect young people. The high school delegates are encouraged to work with their peers to generate and share ideas regarding initiatives that fulfil the environmental, social, creative, and economic diversity, and inclusive aspirations of young people in Brisbane. In regards to the meeting's format, four formal LMAIC meetings are held throughout the year, one held every term during school hours. And could I add, through you, Mr Chair, that the Lord Mayor attends each and every one of them, and it's fantastic to see the young people engaging with the Lord Mayor and putting him on the spot sometimes with some of the questions that they ask him, but I know that he's a very big fan of this particular project, and very much enjoys the interaction with the young people. Our final LMAIC event was held here at City Hall on the 3rd of November, and the event was very well attended by delegates across the city. And I'd also like to acknowledge through you, Mr Chair, my deputy councillor Sandy Landers, and councillor Toomey, and councillor Mackay, and councillor Adaman, and it was fantastic to have everyone there to listen to the presentations of the young people, and what they've managed to achieve throughout this year. So although year 2020 and 2021 have been challenging in many ways, students have strived with a commitment to positively contribute towards LMAIC, and this series of formal events have been an excellent avenue for students across the city to meet peers from different schools and have their voices heard. While the format of this program has some excellent benefits, a few key outcomes for LMAIC students in the 2020 and 2021 years have included the development, character strengths and skills required for good leadership, including empathy, flexibility, optimism, critical thinking, collaboration and communication skills, and the passion to make a difference, and adoption of new technologies to stay connected and positively contribute remotely during the pandemic lockdown. And I must say that the Brisbane app was one of the things that we discussed the other day, and they were very, very positive about it, and were very keen to see its continued use. So the drive to lead and support donation drives within their schools to deliver needed items to charity organisations supporting the community, and an understanding about a wide range of council initiatives, including recovery plans for coronavirus, natural environment, public transport, Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander culture, and youth representation, and understanding into the roles and responsibilities of Brisbane City Council and the local council laws, and finally, a platform for students to provide feedback on a number of council initiatives, including providing Brisbane City Council feedback on areas such as the Visible Ink Youth Hub's website, the new Brisbane app, and the Victoria Park Vision, just to name a few. This feedback is particularly important to the Shriner Council and the Lord Mayor's Youth Advisory Council continues to be an excellent avenue for students to engage in direct civic participation that ensures their voices are heard. In addition, a key pillar of the Lord Mayor's Youth Advisory Council is giving school students the opportunity to develop and present innovative project ideas to contribute into enhancing the inclusivity of Brisbane, making a better Brisbane for young people, and ensuring that the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today. So congratulations to the LMAIC team for this year. I'd really like to add my thanks also to our team of our very own youth development team, who play a pivotal role in organising...
Councillor Howard, I'm sorry, your time has expired. That completes question time for today. We now move on to the consideration of committee reports. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee councillor, three, I see you on your feet.
Sorry, I'm not sure whether I have to call a point of order or not. I just wanted to check, can you confirm that councillor Johnson will be due for the first question next time?
Councillor Johnson will be due for a question in the next question time, yes.
Not the next one.
Yes, so, don't worry, councillor Johnson, I'm aware of the order. Yes, thank you.
Well, it doesn't appear so, Mr Chairman, because councillor Sri has had every fourth or fifth question in the last couple of weeks, and I've had one in three weeks. So something's wrong with the way that you're administering the questions.
I note your issue, you've raised, councillor Johnson, I disagree with you. Lord Mayor.
It's on the record, Mr Chairman, these meetings are recorded.
Councillor Johnson, sorry, please. Thank you, I've called the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 1st of November, 2021, be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, and seconded by the deputy mayor, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 1st of November, 2021, be adopted. Lord Mayor, is there any debate?
Yes, just starting off, I wanted to update you on the lighting of council assets this week, and as councillors would be aware, this week is National Recycling Week, and Brisbane residents do a fantastic job, and have done for many, many years, in making sure that they are active recyclers, and particularly sorting out items in their household waste that can be recycled. And so we know that the vast majority of Brisbane residents really do try to do the right thing. And one of the key barriers to getting more recycling, or to getting recycling rates up, is sometimes a little bit of a lack of understanding of what can go in which bin, and what type of things can be recycled, and what can't be recycled. And so we've been using the opportunity to remind people about some things they may not be aware of, and I think there's probably, in my mind, the one that would possibly be of most interest to people is that you can recycle aluminium foil after you've used it in the oven. So I was cooking some fish fingers for the kids just last night, staple in the Shriner household.
Masked fish.
Yep. And rolled up, rolled up the aluminium foil into a ball the size of a fist, and straight into the recycling bin. That's something that a lot of people don't realise they can do, but that aluminium can be recycled, and so it's a great opportunity. Try not to have any fish fingers stuck to the alfoil. But in recognition of National Recycling Week, we're lighting up the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, the Tropical Dome at Mount Cootha, and Reddick Cliff Place sculptures yellow for tonight and tomorrow night. This month is also Dyslexia Awareness Month, and the Sandgate Town Hall is being lit red all week, this week, to raise awareness. Thursday is Remembrance Day. On the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, we know that the guns fell silent on the Western Front at the end of the First World War, but Remembrance Day is an opportunity to remember those who have died in service across all of the conflicts that we have been involved in as a nation. And so there's a number of ceremonies happening across the city, including here in the city, but we're lighting up the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Tropical Dome, and Mount Cootha, and Reddick Cliff Place sculptures in red on Thursday for Remembrance Day. This week also marks Cervical Cancer Awareness Week, and the Australian Cervical Cancer Foundation works to enhance and protect women's health, and encourages Australians to engage in the conversation about cervical health. Obviously, we are very proud to know that the world's first cancer vaccine for cervical cancer was developed here in Brisbane, and I just read earlier this week, I think it was, or last week in the paper, about a study in the UK, which talked about our vaccine saving lives in the UK, and that's something that should make us all proud. But in support of Cervical Cancer Awareness Week, we're lighting up the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Tropical Domes, at Mount Cootha and Reddick Cliff Place sculptures in orange on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I just did want to table a couple of documents. First of all, I'd like to table a letter that I have sent to the Honourable Shannon Fentiman, NP, the Attorney General and Minister for Justice, and also Minister for Women's, Minister for Prevention of Domestic and Family Violence. And this is a letter relating to the absolutely heartbreaking and disgraceful displaying of the Nazi flag above the Brisbane synagogue just recently, where someone had... the Nazi flag above the Brisbane synagogue just recently, where someone had deliberately targeted the spiritual home for our Jewish community by flying a Nazi flag above that building. Now, that flag was intercepted and taken down by the police, but at the moment, the charge that is most likely for that offence is public nuisance. So this is the same type of offence of, you know, maybe spitting on the footpath or something minor like this. I think everyone would agree that such a hateful act and such an act that has deep meaning to so many in our community, particularly there are still Holocaust survivors here in Brisbane, to see this happen. That flag and that symbol of hatred needs to have tougher penalties associated with it. It needs to be prevented from being displayed. We know that ASIO, our internal security agency, has said one of the number one security threats in our nation is from extremist groups, including neo-Nazis. And so we're calling on the state government to act, to have stiffer penalties for these kind of offences and I table this letter and trust it will have the support of other councillors in taking action. Also, I'd like to table the controlled entity financial statements for Trade Coast Land PTY LTD. As councillors are aware, and I'll table that one, Billy. The City of Brisbane Regulation asks us to table the statements of controlled entities in the first ordinary meeting after those statements become available and this is the first ordinary meeting and I table the statements for Trade Coast Land PTY LTD for the financial year ending the 30th of June 2021. Just recently, we had the honour of, I had the honour of joining with Nina, the Lady Meress, to present the second round of grants from the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust that have been made possible by the opportunity for residents to donate to the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust on their rates notice. Now, this is something councillors will remember, we initially started as a one-off thing for the bushfire appeal and that was announced in late 2019 for the 2020 calendar year and so we did that once to raise money for the bushfire appeal and then it was decided to continue to give residents the opportunity to donate their early payment discount, which is $15 a quarter. It is, for many people, a relatively small amount of money, but it makes a big difference when it adds up across the city. And so for the thousands of people that have donated their early payment discount, I say thank you. On behalf of the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust and the Lady Meress as well, I say thank you, but on behalf of the charities that we were able to support, I particularly say thank you because that is making a very big difference to many, many charities. We were able to supply 24 different charities with funding from that grant round. A total of 109,000 was granted in this particular round and the charities that received those grants were the Sunlight Centre, Little Star Kids, Love Well Foundation, Reason to Thrive, Traction for Young People, Community Canteen, Broken to Brilliant, Carers Foundation, Chism Inc., Magic Moments Foundation, Best Life, Baby Give Back, Be Uplifted, Cystic Fibrosis Queensland Limited, Oz Harvest, St Vincent de Paul Society, the Our Lady of Grace Conference at Carina, Mangrove Housing, AEIOU, Encircle, Brisbane Housing Company, Childhood Cancer Support and the Uniting Church in Australia Property Trust, represented by Wesley Mission for the Brisbane Relief Hub, the Young Allies Foundation and Caring for Carers Australia. And so many of those charities are very small and this grant, enabled by the rate payers of Brisbane, will go a long way and make a difference to so many people. So once again, I say thank you to the residents of Brisbane for their generosity in doing so. It is certainly appreciated and does make a difference. Item A, we have the Contracts and Tendering Report for September 2021. And as I've spoken about many times before, we have our target of having 80% of our contracts with local business in South East Queensland and this particular report, I can say that 83.67% of contracts were with local business and so we're continuing to actively support those local businesses and help meet those targets while we deliver so many important projects and services across the city. So I know that there'll be other councillors speaking on these items and on these contracts, but I did just want to mention one final thing. We had councillor Cassidy talking before about the Brisbane App and saying what an outrageous waste of money he thought it was and someone made a comment about Facebook pages, I think it was councillor Marks and I think it was councillor Griffith said, oh, at least they're reading our Facebook page. And we're like, well, I think we're the only ones that are. We're the only ones that are because when they posted about the app recently, 14 likes, of which two of those 14 were Jared Cassidy himself. He liked it with his work account and his private account, double likes. So we're happy to read your post councillor Cassidy.
Your time has expired. Move for, no, I'm moving extension. Okay, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, thanks very much Chair. I feel like I should start paying rent for living in the Lord Mayor's head all this time. On, I think it's pretty evident, I think it's pretty, I think that's pretty evident, Lord Mayor, you spend an awful lot of time talking about me. Another week-
Councillors, all please.
I will not take that interjection Chair. Another week in another threadbare report from this Lord Mayor and this administration. When you look at the NC with one item before us today, you start to think that all they're doing in that cabinet room, yeah, why are they getting the extra money and all they're doing in that cabinet room is getting those rate payer funded lunches and not doing much else because before us, all we have is just the single clause for Contracts and Tendering and it's another big, long list of ongoing council work being contracted out, being farmed out to the private sector at the lowest price and to the lowest bidder. And we see a staggering $56 million on electrical contracts, another $7 million in plumbing contracts for works as basic as gutter, roof and drain cleaning. I'm pretty sure that's kind of responsive on the ground work that council offices could be doing instead of these contracts going, which are all about insecure work. In total, there's $63 million worth of work that is being contracted out that could be long-term and ongoing jobs here in council, work that could and should be done in-house. That $63 million could create hundreds of stable, permanent council jobs for the likes, as I've just mentioned, of electricians and plumbers across Brisbane and support trades and skills here in our city, having more apprenticeships in council and more permanent trades jobs here, but instead they're going to labour hire companies, supporting insecure work and less rights for workers. We also see more than $1 million for event management and $230,000 for contractor and visitor management. All of that again, could be done in-house. Another contract that caught our eye on this side of the chamber was the demolition and construction of a new bonsai house at Mount Cootha. This was the little house for little trees that was prioritised by this LMP Lord Mayor last year rather than bringing back curbside collection. Now repeatedly, the time called for the funding allocated to the bonsai treehouse to be used to reinstate curbside collection. Those calls fell on deaf ears because this LMP administration, as per usual, has their priorities all wrong. And finally, there's $48 million in contracts for physical security services. Now perhaps the bill for physical security services is so large because so many LMP councillors are now taking security guards with them to so-called community consultation events. They're probably so worried about how poorly they are governing this city and how unpopular their decisions are out in the community. So perhaps if this LMP administration chair actually listened to residents, stopped rigging consultation processes, invested more in our suburbs and ceased misusing rate payers' funds for their own self-promotion, they wouldn't feel the need to have so much security with them all the time. The security spend is a very telling sign for the dissent that is building in this city towards this LMP Lord Mayor and his LMP councillors and their arrogant leadership here in Brisbane.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to enter the debate on our Contracts and Tendering and particularly to speak about the BrizAsia Festival. The production and event management agreement for this is contained within the Contracts and Tendering and the purpose of this procurement process was to enter into a new contract for BrizAsia Festival for the years 2021 to 2025. The initial term is for this contract for three years with options to extend for additional periods of up to two years and the estimated expenditure over the potential four-year term is $1,104,000. Since its inception in 2013, the BrizAsia Festival has been home to rich and culturally diverse Asian experiences that make Brisbane so great and has provided the residents of Brisbane more to see and do across this city. At the time of its inception, council identified the growing need to establish a platform to nurture and celebrate Brisbane's vibrant Asian communities through arts and creative cultural public programming. Taking place annually in the month of February, BrizAsia Festival has hosted over 600 events, 800 artists and art workers and over 2 million visitors to date. Over the past eight years, BrizAsia has grown into a citywide festival, offering traditional and contemporary food, performance, visual arts, dance and music. The successful producer through this procurement process is Sounds Across Oceans. Through their submission, they achieved a higher score against the assessment criteria. Their submission demonstrated a comprehensive strategic vision, including a wide-ranging and diverse arts and cultural programme, supported by strong partnerships. The submission provided strong representation of local artists, staff and contributors, including a four-year vision to increase learning and development opportunities for emerging creators and culturally and linguistically diverse communities. Furthermore, Sounds Across Oceans demonstrated comprehensive evidence of their capacity and experience to produce and deliver arts and cultural events with comprehensive inclusion of workplace health and safety and COVID-19 risk management plans and methodologies. We look forward to working with Sounds Across Oceans as they deliver their vision of the BrizAsia Festival over the coming years and I commend it to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
No, there it is. Up and running. I rise to speak in regards to a couple of items in this clause. The first one that struck me actually as I was reading through it on Friday, the first one I came across was the spend for increasing the water flow at the PCYC at Carindale. Now, I thought, what on earth are we having to increase the water flow there? This building was actually built, what, in 1998? So it's not an old building and it was a really nice building, of course. I've had something to do with the PCYC's for the last 20 years, so I've been over to Carindale and to a lot of the other PCYC's, so I have some idea of what the facility is and the nature and the quality of the facility. So I thought, well, okay, maybe they're doing something internal that they need more water, I don't know, but I thought, again, 211,000 dollars. So if it's on the other side of the water meter, of course, that should be QUU. Why should we be spending money to increase the water flow if it's a QUU issue? And if it's not a QUU issue and it's our building, right, why on earth a building that's less than 25 years old having to have either maintenance, a fairly substantial maintenance cost here or something else happening? And then I thought, well, it's really, I mean, PCYC's are very important to our community and of course, if most of the councillors here have PCYC's, they know how important it is to the work that they do with our youth and other groups within the community. But I thought of the inequity here between what's happening at Carindale with increasing water flow and the water flow that we're trying to stop at the Anala PCYC on council property. The building's not council property, but the road, the curb and channeling and the culverts is. And I know it started back in Milton Dix's time as councillor and then I followed it up when I became councillor to try to get the reconstruction of the road, the culverts and the curb and channeling to flow better and not flow down the driveway into the PCYC area at the bottom level, which were flooding and still can flood the bottom courts, right? I've been trying to get that funded for years and I think it was about a cost of about a half a million dollars to do that work when I first put that on the wish list. It's probably a bit more now, but I just would like, I would just like the Chair of Programme Three to have a look at that and to revisit that because yes, it's important to support the PCYC at Carindale, absolutely. And there's probably, hopefully, a very good reason why we're spending $211,000, but we need to be, there needs to be equity here with the other PCYC's and the way they're treated as well. And finally, I would just like to make a quick comment on the contract here, of course, for the refurbishment of the Anala Library. I just want to thank the staff of the library, my team and some of the contractors that are in there now, they're doing a magnificent job. They work as a team, whatever they need, they get. If they need access, they get it immediately, straight away and I'd just like to thank the whole team within that precinct of the work that they're doing and hopefully we won't have to use any contingency fund. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Strunk. Further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and I'm delighted to speak on item A, the contract for the new bonsai house in the Mount Cootha Botanic Gardens. A contract that was awarded to a Brisbane cupney, in fact councillor Hammond, in Stafford. So a nice one in the north side of Brisbane. Mr Chair, as part of the Brisbane Botanic Gardens Mount Cootha Master Plan, which was released in 2018, the new bonsai house was included as requiring an upgrade. The original bonsai house was built in 1999 and was opened in collaboration with our sister city, Koby. Construction started last month and it's due to be completed mid-next year. The design of the new bonsai house has been inspired by the art of bonsai itself in the hope to induce contemplation in the viewer and show the patience in the gardener. The new fully accessible building has been consciously designed, featuring locally sourced stone as well as recycled and sustainably sourced native timber. The new structure will include a new pavilion to showcase the collection, a contemplation platform for viewing the Japanese gardens, a walled entry courtyard and a workshop area for training and education because we have a lot of skilled children that go to the bonsai house. The new display will be home to about 50 plants, including figs, azaleas and maples. The oldest bonsai in the collection is a Port Jackson fig that was established in 1941, so making it 80 years old. Many of the bonsai were donated from the original private collection of the late Len Weber, who was Australia's most published authorities on bonsai. The collection is maintained by Botanic Garden staff and volunteers from the Bonsai Society of Queensland and Beamer Bonsai Club, who are very much looking forward to this new building being constructed. Mr Chair, the new bonsai house will be a very popular destination for residents and visitors, with volunteers regularly holding events in this attraction and it's just another example of the Shriner Council providing more to see and do in Brisbane.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks Chair. I rise to speak on the BrizAsia Festival contract and to congratulate the administration for its continued support of this festival. I would say that I'd like to see a lot more money and funding put towards these kinds of events. I think dollar for dollar, the value they deliver to the broader public far exceeds a lot of the other stuff that council spends money on, but I do think it's a good sign that this contract is at least coming forward. I wanted to make a few comments, I don't know how interested they'll be to most of the LMP councillors, but I've had a few good conversations with a few people in this chamber and maybe there are relevance to the Sounds Across Oceans crew who do some really good work and I've seen some of the events they've put on in the past, which are great, but it's interesting in Australia how the dominant conception of multiculturalism often tends to silo community groups and to some extent what might be called fix them in time, in the sense that governments of all stripes and all levels put a lot of funding into discreetly identifying- put a lot of funding into discreetly identifiable community associations that are often structured around ethnic identities. So you'll have a project or a festival that gets funding for the Tamil community, and you'll have another festival for this community and that community, et cetera. And that's great, but often the stuff that gets left out are the festivals and events, the projects that encourage a more fluid and diverse and complex conception of multiculturalism that recognizes that no culture is fixed in time and that cultures evolve and cross-pollinate and transform and influence one another. And I think that's one of the things that's really interesting about the Briz Asia Festival is that it's not just celebrating cultural stereotypes or fixed-in-time views of, oh, this is what a particular East Asian or South Asian or Southeast Asian cultural experience looks like. It's about recognizing that cultural identities can evolve and change and are heavily dependent on shifting contexts. And I actually think that's one of the things that makes Briz Asia Festival in particular really special. It's not just saying, hey, this is what that culture looks like. It's saying, hey, culture is a process. And I think that's something that a lot of, even us as councillors, we're still grappling with it when we're trying to work out what do we find and what do we value and what do we prioritise. Often, the stuff that generates most value culturally and communally is the stuff that promotes sharing of ideas and collaboration across cultures rather than purely reinforcing silos or segmentations between cultures in the name of supporting culture. And so it's a little bit philosophical and abstract, I know. But I do think it's an interesting thing for more event organisers and council officers to be thinking about a little more closely. One of the things I've tried to do a lot as a councillor in terms of the community events I support is to ask organisers what elements are they including that encourage audience participation or a wider range of people getting involved in a project so that it's not simply a bunch of predominantly white people in the audience sitting down and watching people of different ethnic groups perform in their traditional dress in a way that sometimes feels a little bit extractive or tokenising. But it's actually a mutual sharing of culture and a mutual cross-pollination. And I think there's something to be said for that approach and perhaps more thinking needs to be done to ensure that these sorts of festivals don't become tokenising or don't result in shallow, simplistic postcard versions of cultural identity, but actually embrace the richness and resilience and genuine radical potential of different cultures and different ways of seeing the world. But like I said, I think it's great that the festival's getting funded. I hope that the Lord Mayor and councillor Howard will seriously consider increasing the funding and support for these projects in the future. And I would also add that there's a lot of in-kind support that council can offer in terms of stuff like free road closures and helping with permits, et cetera, et cetera. And sometimes that stuff is just as important as the actual funding council gives. And I've noted that some festivals that Brisbane City Council sponsors and supports seem to get a lot more of that in-kind or tangential council support than other events do. And maybe that's also something to look at closely and reflect on. For example, I saw with Brisbane Festival, council working really hard to ensure that festival organisers could get the permits for a lot of outdoor gigs and events in parks and road closures, et cetera. And Brisbane City Council officers did a lot of extra work to make that stuff happen. And I hope that the same sort of thing will happen with Briz Festival and other festivals that celebrate diverse ethnic communities. Thank you.
Councillor Strick. Further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. I rise to speak in support of item A, the Contracts and Tendering Report. In particular, the item listed at number three, which is contract number 532687, the Heathwood Park New Amenities Building. This amenities building is very important for our local community because it will provide services that have been longed for. And it will also help to provide facilities for our outdoor cinema events that are regularly held in Heathwood Park. Now, particularly, we do have cricket operating on the field at the moment. And this will allow change rooms, it will allow toilets and storage. But importantly, for the wider community, we will be able to step forward into having more multicultural events at this location as well. Because, as we all know, when we go to these multicultural events, there is a need for many of the performers to get changed. And so having the change room facilities will allow another facet for the use of this building. And on top of that, we are looking at, right across the spectrum of all generations, being able to enjoy the park and use these facilities. So within the facility itself, there is not only a baby change facility, but also an adult and a child toilet, similar to what has already been installed in Calumvale District Park, so that families with multiple children can have one carer, take multiple children in to the toilet facilities at the one time. And I know some of my fellow councillors here have more than one children. And that they would be able to take a pram in with a couple of children. They would all be able to go to the toilet at the same time, which is very, very important. And all of the toilets will be unisex and ambulant so that we are catering for the widest range possible of every particular park user who goes to Heathwood Park. Now, this is very important because we are approaching this from a completely user-friendly perspective. And this is what is important when we are developing these buildings going forward, that we look at all of the learnings of the past and how popular some of these different types of facilities have become in our bigger parks and our major spaces. So I think that this will be well received. The doorways are actually wider as well so that they can accommodate wheelchairs, the twin prams, and the like. But most importantly, for the local junior sporting club that has their games there and also trains there, this will be a very vital component of where they go forward. And can I say thank you to councillor Davis for helping the process with this and making sure that we are actually recognising the fact that we have a huge number of girls who are now playing cricket at that location. So girls in sport is something that is really getting promoted. And that is not from a gender basis, but it is from an equity basis. And having the two different change rooms, having the toilet and shower within the change room facilities as well allows that we have that opportunity for those sporting codes to engage in their pursuits in a very safe, family-friendly, and vital manner.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order.
Will councillor Owen take a quick question?
I'm happy to take a question, councillor Strick.
Thanks, through you, Chair. Do you know, are the change rooms, the showers, are they open 24 hours? Or they're locked off and only accessible if you've got the key?
That will be something that will be determined by the council officer, the council officers. There is non-exclusivity as documented in the detail of the situation that's been put forward from the council officers. So that is something that, with many of the existing facilities, for example, the other one in one of my parks, Calumvale District Park, those toilet facilities are locked at night as are the gates. So it's a security situation. But there are public access toilets that are available that will be made available through the normal council process for toilets in parks. But this is a very important step forward for the Brisbane Super Kings and all of the juniors who train at Heathwood Park and play at Heathwood Park. This is a great facility that is going to enhance their participation in sport and be active and healthy in our community and in our city of Brisbane. Thank you.
Councillor Owen. Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
We have a motion for an adjournment for afternoon tea that commences, moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Harden, for afternoon tea adjournment that commences when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you, councillors. Further speakers in the ANC report? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item A, the only matter that is in the ANC report this week and not even work done by the administration. It's work done by the officers that we're ticking off on. But I have some problems with the report today and I won't be voting for it. Firstly, I just want to put on the record my concern about council's failure to disclose the terms of the contracts in this item. And I'm referring to page nine. It is the subcategory three, test and tag of electrical appliances. Council has a statutory obligation to disclose the amount of the contracts that are awarded. They must do that within a certain timeframe under the City of Brisbane regulation, and they've not done so. Now, I don't know if this is just an administrative error, which I suspect that it may be, but there are no values associated with the awarding of those contracts. And I note the Lord Mayor's not here, Mr Chairman, but in his absence, I'll just draw to your attention that City of Brisbane Act Regulations, Chapter Six, Part Four, Section 227, states that council must, as soon as possible after entering into a contract, put certain information on the public record. So that's a real problem. That's part of a bigger problem that I've got. I was recently contacted by a small business owner in my ward who has been an electrical supplier to council for the past 24 years. As they outlined to me, they have turned up whenever council has asked at any time of the day or night and undertaken whatever job council has asked them to do. And they've worked hard on the panel, they've got good references. And the business owner wrote to me, very distressed because he'd been told about five weeks ago now that he would not be included on the new panel. And I've looked through all this, and I'm not going to name him, but I can see that in the subcategories he's applied for, he's not been appointed onto the panel. Now councillor Davis hopped up before and made a bit of a joke and a bit of fun with councillor Hammond about how great it was that a Stafford business in councillor Hammond's area got a contract. A small business owner in my ward has lost his livelihood because of this council decision. I wrote to the CEO, it's just over five weeks ago now, and I've not had the courtesy of a reply. The business owner has told me he's had no explanation from council about why he's not been reappointed to the panel. There's never been any feedback, well, this is what I've been told. He's never had any feedback of any problems with his work or impropriety with his work. And after 24 years of service, I guess I question why council hasn't spoken to him about this, why he's not been reappointed. If there are good reasons, I would expect those to be communicated to a longstanding small business partner in our community. So again, the Lord Mayor's not here. He couldn't be bothered turning up after afternoon tea to participate in this council meeting. But when he claims that this is about benefiting Brisbane's small businesses, that's not the case. That's not the case. Some, the mates of the LNP, clearly, you know, that's fine, they all get looked after. But meanwhile, a small electrical contractor in my ward has lost his livelihood. And that concerns me with no explanation. Now, there is a third problem with the report before me today. And I think councillor Cassidy sort of touched on it a little bit earlier. But the problem we've got here is these panels, it is pretty clear that the tenders are being awarded to the lowest value, the cheapest, I should say, the cheapest value of the suppliers. And when you look at some of these subcategories, you've got to be asking if this is the right decision. Let me just give some examples here. Category one electrical services. So the lowest, or the most successful low tender was $922,000. The highest non-supported tender was $2.8 million. Now, the median of that is about $1.8 million. But the contract that we've accepted is $922,000. Now, that's half the median price. I guess I'm questioning whether or not some of the lowest bids are going to offer us the stability, the security, and the reliability, given the very, very low bids that have been made in contrast with both the average and the highest bids. Now, the highest bid's not the best, the lowest bid's not often the best. It's usually somewhere in the middle. And you've got to look at all those things like, have these people been suppliers to council before? What is their track record? What is their business history? We don't know any of that information here. But what we can see is that council is awarding these tenders to the lowest or the cheapest-cost suppliers. And they are excluding, for example, a business in my ward with 24 years of service to the city of Brisbane. And that's wrong, that's wrong in my view. So this problem continues throughout this. There's some without values at all. I'm looking at subcategory four, thermal imaging of switchboards. The tender that was approved was $44,000. The highest non-selected tenderer was $158,000. The average is $101,000. So again, the tender that's been selected, or the panel that's been selected, are less than half of the median of all the other businesses together. That indicates to me that there is a really big problem. If most of the market is sitting around a different point, why are some of these suppliers so much cheaper? And again, we don't know because we've not seen this information. But I have seen the advice of a long-term supplier to council asking why they missed out. And it's really quite disappointing that the CEO hasn't had the courtesy to respond. So another example, subcategory five, uninterrupted power supplies and maintenance. The successful tenderer, $24,000. The highest bid, which was not selected, was $127,000. The average is $70,000. So the successful tenderers are way, way less than the average of all the other suppliers. This indicates to me that there's a problem. This is the course that council went down with the mowing contracts a few years ago. And that was massively detrimental to the city. Council went out and picked the lowest bids and they were unable to mow council's public spaces. Some didn't even have mowers. Thank you councillor Griffith. So I think there is a really big problem here. I'm not prepared to support this item without information. Here's another example. This is communications and cabling services. The successful tenderers were around $1.3 million. The highest non-successful tenderer was $2.5 million. And the average is about $1.7 million. And yet, again, the successful panel tenderers are well, well under the average. So combined with the local information that I've been sent, the lack of response from Brisbane City Council about the concerns raised with the panel tendering process, and the very concerning low bids that council has accepted that don't seem to be reflective of the majority of other panel suppliers, I'm not supporting this item.
Thank you. Further speakers? Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And thank you to the councillors who contributed to the discussion on contracts and tendering. It's interesting that we heard councillor Johnston commenting that a local electrical business didn't get the gig that had previously been a supplier to council. Look, I've made it very clear that we still need competition in the mix here. And I understand that it might be disappointing for an existing business that has worked for council in the past to get outbid by another business. But that is competition, and that drives better value for the ratepayers. So no one is guaranteed work forever with council, and that's why we do have tender processes. But that local business was replaced with another local business. And there are many local businesses on that panel. So when it comes to businesses that are not successful in a tender process, they are always offered a debriefing and a meeting to explain why they were not selected. And in this particular... And in this particular case, I am aware that this has happened, because I just signed a letter yesterday on this exact issue back to the supplier. And so that has absolutely been offered, and certainly hope that any tenderer that has questions about the process would take that opportunity up, because they can understand then, if they're bidding on future work, how they can have a better chance in the future. But this is a competitive process. That's the nature of it. And so I don't know why any council would expect that, you know, someone having current work with council would ensure their permanent ongoing work with council forever. It's a competitive marketplace, and we need to make sure we're always getting the best outcome. And that outcome is not only about cost, it's also about the quality of the offering, the record of that business. There's a whole range of factors that we look into it. So if someone has been a good supplier to council, we take that into account. We absolutely do take that into account. But as I said, in any competitive process, there are winners and losers, but that is about ensuring we protect the interests of the ratepayers. There were some interesting comments made about a couple of different issues. One was councillor Strunk appeared quite critical that we were helping a local community club, the PCYC at Carrendale, to improve their ability to respond to potential fire threats. And there's actually a long and interesting history to this one that maybe councillor Strunk is not aware of, but the Carrendale PCYC did have a fire a number of years ago, where they lost their bus in the fire, like their entire bus burnt to the ground. And as part of the investigation into any situation like this, there were some recommendations made. One of those recommendations was that there needed to be an increase in the pressure coming out of the fire hydrants at that location. QUU has, I understand, investigated different ways to achieve that. One of the challenges in that area is that the pipes, the water pipes in that area are very old, some in excess of 100 years old. And so just blanket increasing pressure for the entire precinct there would, in QUU's view, potentially lead to the failure of a number of water pipes in the area due to their age, and then the loss of a lot of water when we're in a situation of approaching low dam levels and approaching drought conditions with water supply. And so we've stepped in to assist the PCYC by providing tanks on site so they can increase their water pressure to fight fires and for other purposes on site, without jeopardising other parts of the network nearby. Now, we hear time and time again, Labour councillors falsely claiming that apparently we're not doing enough to support community organisations or sporting clubs, yet when we do help them out, they're not happy with that either. So we'll continue to work in support of community facilities, and this improvement is one of many that we make right across the city to help community organisations in different ways. Each organisation has different needs, and their priorities will be different. But in this particular case, the number one priority for the PCYC at Carrendale was to deal with this issue of water pressure and their ability to fight fires. Why? Because they had a devastating fire, and they knew the impacts of that. When it comes to the comments that councillor Cassidy made on security, I mean, come on. Look, I'm not really sure whether I should even respond to those comments, they were so outrageous, an attempt to politicise something that is clearly not political. But the claims that were made about security guards for councillors or myself, councillor Cassidy knows, councillors or myself, we don't have security. We're not like the premier that travels around with an entourage of about 15 people wherever they go. I go down to the shops by myself, I don't have security with me. I go out to community events with, you know, an advisor, but not security. And so any suggestion that councillors are taking security guards around is just politicking on an issue which is actually quite serious, because what is happening here is that, and there was a question before about what steps we're taking to respond to COVID challenges, this is one of the things that we have had to do to make sure that the business of council and a whole range of events and engagements can continue. So I guess the question is, is it appropriate that staff of council, whose job it may be to consult with the community on something or other, are also acting as bouncers to enforce COVID restrictions? Is that appropriate? I don't think so. They've got a job to do, but bouncing members of the public if they're not complying with COVID restrictions is not one of their jobs. And I wonder, given the union background of all the Labour councils, how they would feel about that demarcation issue there? Is it, you know, should council staff be stepping in to enforce COVID restrictions? Is that really their role? Now, they'll do reasonable things, you know, they will ask people to do the right thing. But there's a point where some people refuse to do the right thing, and what happens then? And so there's been a number of events that we've held and engagements where we've been mindful of COVID restrictions, which are implemented by the state government, but ultimately we are required to have some way of ensuring that the COVID restrictions are adhered to. So to suggest that this is somehow security for council is outrageous, and is actually more to do with the restrictions that have been placed on us by another level of government and making sure we comply with those. But as councillor Cassidy should know, this is also about the people who provide a range of security services for our ongoing operations, to make sure that council facilities are locked up at night and are safe and secure, to make sure that toilets that have to be locked, and not all toilets are locked, but some are locked at night, are locked up appropriately, and to make sure various gates are locked. There's a whole range of security requirements that we have right across the city that are ongoing, and we get the support of security contractors to do that. And once again, that is the most effective way to provide that service, to give that role to people who do this for a living, are appropriately trained in the processes and procedures. And, you know, it is appropriate that we go out to tender for these sort of services, but any kind of suggestion, this is personal protection for councillors, is outrageous. And as I said, politicising what is clearly a non-political service and issue.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The motion before us is the E and C report from the first of November 2021. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Division?
Division's been called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnston.
Okay.
Please ring the bells. The division is on the E and C report. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty in favour, one against, and six abstentions.
Thank you. We now move on to the deputy mayor's report. Deputy Mayor, the economic development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee report.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee held on Tuesday, the second of November 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the second of November 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Mister Chair. What's on at the Brisbane Business Hub this week? I've spoken about the fantastic work over the last 12 months, but just so councillors know, if there's any local businesses that need the support, on Thursday, nine till eleven, Controlling Your Bank, I think all of us might need to know how to do that, learn how to take back control of your bank with tools to assess and action from Cooper Financial Connections. On the sixteenth, from nine till eleven a.m., Future Brisbane Events, How to Win Procurement for Your Business, Learn How to Prepare Future Business Event Opportunities in Brisbane and Tips on How to Win Procurement by CCIQ. And also on the sixteenth, from two to four, A Vision of Brisbane, Major Projects and Infrastructure in the City, A Discussion with Business Leaders at the Forefront of Brisbane's Progression and Learn What's Happening Now and What the Future Looks Like in the City. We've got representatives from Brisbane City Council, Cross River Rail, QPAC, BIDAR, Destination Brisbane Consortium, and Queen's Wharf Development talking on a panel there, for those who are interested. Glad to see the state government, Lord Mayor, through you, Mister Chair, also supporting us in the opportunities to support local businesses in the Business Hub. The committee presentation last week was on the Queen Street Mall Bollards project. This was something that was very forefront of mind when it first became apparent late 2016, with public areas needing protection from what we saw, some of the tragic events that were happening overseas, with vehicles driving through malls and pedestrian areas. So it very quickly became apparent with the risk assessment and working with the QPS that King George Square, Queen Street Mall, Brunswick Street, and Trinatown Mall in the Valley were susceptible to these kind of attacks. Between June 2016 and now, we've gone through the planning work, design, procurement, and then the construction schedule for Queen Street Mall Bollards. Actually, at the time, I think the first ones, I know the first ones, we got up with King George Square very quickly, knowing how many people love King George Square and the large events we hold in that space. That soon became a worldwide shortage of bollards, and it took us a little longer than we expected to be able to procure what we needed with so many people around and cities around the world needing them, but so few providers as well. So what we ended up with here was a mixture of fixed and retractable bollards, so there can still be access for work, emergency vehicles, and cleaning vehicles as well. Council City Safe Room in Burnett Lane controls the bollards to allow access. There's messages over loudspeakers to make sure people are aware if they're in the mall in the wee hours of the morning, to know they're going to be lowering. A lot of work went into the design of the infrastructure, we saw that in the presentation. Not only did dial before you dig have to be done, but nine times out of 10, dial before you dig was not quite right. So there was a lot of mitigation circumstances as well. And of course, the design of the infrastructure, we wanted to make sure that people weren't necessarily going, oh, there's protective bollards. It had to fit in with the infrastructure design and the aesthetic of Queen Street Mall as well. So a lot of lighting, a lot of beautiful planting and seating, vehicle mitigation through garden beds as well, which look absolutely gorgeous now. And soon, we will begin the work on the greening of the amenity block in the Edward Street and in the Albert Street part of the Queen Street Mall, and it is going to look absolutely fantastic. And I'll leave the report to the chamber.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers? No further speakers. I now move the report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, the Transport Committee report, please.
Look, thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the second of November 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Owen that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the second of November 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thanks, Mister Chair. Last week, the Transport Committee received an update on e-mobility in Brisbane. We heard about the great progress being made to implement the actions that were outlined in our first-of-a-kind e-mobility strategy and trends in e-mobility around the world. Of course, e-mobility's been a great success here in Brisbane, with more than 5 million trips taken on shared devices since 2018. Remembering that CityCycle only achieved 4.2 million trips in the decade that it operated, e-mobility is off to a cracking start. We also know that in Brisbane, though, that private e-scooters have taken off. It's a great thing to give people choice to leave their car at home in order to get around our city. But the state road rules that Minister Mark Bailey put in place for e-scooters do need another look at. And the technology since then has come forward in leaps and bounds, and the laws need to keep in place. We need to make sure that...
Councillor Johnston.
With council's shared scheme, we unashamedly put safety first, Chair. Riders of council's shared scheme are speed limited, they have helmet locks, and are disabled from riding in high-risk areas. But safety measures like these don't apply to private e-scooters. Managing speed remains a primary issue when it comes to e-wheeling, and the Queensland Government must change the necessary laws to let police enforce the rules, including ensuring that riders are adhering to road rules and wearing their helmets. We also know that there is a lot of community concern about e-scooters being forced onto footpaths. Shunah Council continues to do its part for infrastructure to keep up with the e-mobility era by trialling the new CityLink cycleway in the CBD, rolling out e-mobility parking hubs across the city, and continuing to work with our scheme operators on safety improvements. The road rules need to be changed to allow e-scooters in bike lanes, letting them separate from those walking on footpaths, the very vulnerable people that are walking on footpaths. And I've recently written to Minister Bailey about some of these issues, while also advocating for a review of the rules governing personal mobility devices, with a focus on ensuring that QPS are well-equipped to enforce these rules. Regulations surrounding the standard of e-mobility devices also needs urgent attention. People can get their hands on all types of high-powered models which make their ways onto Brisbane streets. I've written to both the Deputy Prime Minister Barnabas Joyce and Minister Bailey about this, asking for the federal government to investigate importation regulations and Australian standards, and for the state to consider what Queensland police needs in order to be able to take action against non-compliant devices, of which there are many, many thousand proliferating in our city, and I'm very confident there will be many more after Christmas this year, Chair. We have welcomed e-mobility into Brisbane with open arms, but now we need to push other levels of government to keep up with the pace of this transport revolution. I'm pleased that the gravity of this issue is dawning on the state government, with Minister Bailey proposing an e-mobility workshop last week, which will focus on better regulation. I welcome that workshop, and I can assure councillors that Brisbane City Council will participate in it fulsomely. If we get this right, Brisbane and Queensland can remain an e-mobility leader, and I believe we cannot afford to get it wrong. All levels of government need to make sure that e-mobility fits in safely to the transport mix, and I'm glad that the state will be joining us on that journey. While there are undoubtedly still some regulation issues that need ironing out, the Shunah Council is proud to make Brisbane an international leader in e-mobility, and it's encouraging to see that green transport is booming in our city with more people walking and riding than ever before. And I'll leave my comments at that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak briefly on the e-mobility strategy update. And the e-mobility issue is more broader than just the scooter rollout that the Shunah administration's overseen, but I just want to target my remarks to that aspect of the strategy. When this matter came to council several years ago, I voted against it. And I said very clearly at the time why I did not support this, because council had not considered safety in this whole process. They can go on the footpath wherever they like, they can go at whatever speed they want to go at. There's nothing to stop them riding on the roads, there's nothing to stop them riding on a footpath. And since the minute this process was introduced, this administration has seen serious accidents happening everywhere in Brisbane. Pedestrians have been bowled over, elderly people have been hurt, and there have been catastrophic injuries to scooter riders themselves. And councillor Murphy's been proud of this. It's only a few weeks ago he stood up in this place, and he read out, I think it was a Facebook post from a young woman who had ridden a scooter, that she publicly said she had no capability to ride. She crashed and had an accident, and she hoped it would be a lesson for others. That's something that councillor Murphy has been proud of. You don't introduce a new form of transport without having safety processes in place to
Noted.
Proud, proud he was of that young lady's accident and what happened. He read that out in great detail. But let me leave that aside for now and just say, when the administration pushed forward with putting scooters all over Brisbane, they failed to make sure it was happening in a safe and regulated way. That's always been the problem. I am not opposed to scooters per se, but I am opposed to the way that this council has rolled out the process without safety being front of mind. There is no regulation, essentially. These people can do whatever they want on scooters, they can go as fast as they want. They, you know, maybe the scooter will stop braking at a certain amount of speed, but that'll be it. There's an enforcement issue, but we already know the police don't enforce cyclists when they don't, you know, follow the road rules. And they're certainly not interested in enforcing scooter riders. None of this is new to this administration, none of it. But into this known environment, the Lord Mayor has put mainly young people in this city at risk, at risk. So people are hopping onto electronic devices that can have speeds of 20 or 30 kilometres an hour that they've never ridden before, onto the dodgiest footpaths in the world. And of course, they're having accidents. And they're hurting others, not intentionally, but through a process of fundamentally not being able to manage the scooters. This is a known problem. And over the last two years, or three years as it's been, through the trials and now the contract rollouts, this has been well-known to council. So I just say, finally, the light bulb dawns over there in the LMP that there's a problem. It was obvious from the very beginning there was a problem. Absolutely, right from the very beginning. And this administration needs to wake up and realise that it can't just tick off on a solution without looking at how it's going to operate in our community and how it can be done safely. And that's what they failed to do. And the results, as we've heard from the hospitals and the ambulance service, from Facebook, from people I know whose children have had terrible, terrible accidents on this. You know, it's catastrophic when people are hurt. And the LMP and this council must share in some of that responsibility because we have allowed these scooters to proliferate all over Brisbane knowing that there is not the safety arrangements and regulations in place to do so safely. And that, in my view, is shameful. And it needs to be urgently fixed. And this come-to-Jesus moment that councillor Murphy's finally had, and the Lord Mayor after spruiking these things for years now, they should wake up to themselves. Young people are being hurt every day and it's time you step in and you make sure that they can operate safely. They need to be a way lower speed to start with so no one gets hurt. And there certainly needs to be rules around where and how they're used. So this administration rushed ahead, picking winners on contracts, and failed to put the necessary settings in place to make sure these scooters can operate safely in our community. And it's, it's, it's almost too little, too late now. But I certainly hope you're going to wake up and do the right thing here and fix up the mess that you've created so no more people get hurt. No more pedestrians, innocent people walking along the footpath, and no more scooter riders who have underestimated the power of these devices and the dodgy state of council footpaths around Brisbane.
Thank you. councillor Murphy, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, Chair, councillor Johnson said I was quite and quite proud of an e-scooter user's accident, which is a disgusting statement, it's typical of her, but it's obviously not true.
Thank you. Are there further speakers?
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Okay. Do you want to deal with that now?
Yes, thank you. Yes, councillor Murphy has misrepresented me. I didn't say he was proud of her accident, he was proud of her Facebook post about the accident.
Thank you. Are there, are there, are there further speakers? councillor Murphy, would you like to sum up? No summing up? We'll now put this motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Wines, the Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the second of November 2021, be adopted.
You were on.
Seconded, sorry.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Matty that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the second of November 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week's presentation was on parking infrastructure modernisation, that is ensuring that our parking meters are modern and are working. And when people try to use them, they are there. You know, the point of parking meters is to create a sort of a balance between the needs of competing interests for what is a limited space for people who live in certain locations, people who want to do business as a trader or a customer in certain places, to ensure that those spaces are available to, to the public. They arrived in Brisbane in 1957 and have been a feature of our streets since that time. Now, part of the parking meter programme is the fact that more than $3.35 million each year is spent on council maintenance. And the three things that would typically break inside a council parking meter are the coin mechanism, the e-receeding printer, and a credit card insertion reader. From February of this year, councillors should hopefully know that of February of this year, there is no more coin-based parking meter payment. So everything will either be on card or on Solo Park. And that has been the case since February of this year. It was a transition that occurred comfortably as a result of a lot of businesses moving to a cashless system. By the removal of the coin mechanism, we have far fewer breakages in our meters. And that is one way that they, that we're getting more life out of the existing meter reader. The, the change that's on, the change that's occurring at the moment is the removal of paper receipting. We will be moving to completely e-receeding on parking meters. And for councillors' interests, this is a role of receipt paper that is in your typical parking meter. And the council goes through about 216 kilometres of this each and every year. Because of its nature, it's a sort of a waxy, immediate print paper. It is not able to be recycled. And so it doesn't fit with our objectives of limited waste and recyclability. So there will no longer be paper receipts available in Brisbane City Council meters. You'll have to go to, to completely electronic. And interestingly, 40% of all, 40% of all transactions on the parking meter are already in Solo Park. Can I also point out to councillors in advance that the parking, the credit card readers, the insert readers will also be removed and will move to totally a tap-based system, which I think most people are more familiar with. 97% of people use the tap system, which obviously says only 3% of people use the insertion system. They will also be removed. The, that will be over a four-phase strategy concluding in June of next year. The modernisation of our systems makes usage easier, makes our system more sustainable, and means that the existing mechanisms, the existing machines can get a better length of life. If there, I welcome any further contributions by councillors.
Any further speakers? councillor Johnston.
Just briefly, I don't support this. I wrote back to council when we notified it, about it during the week. I didn't support money being taken out of meters as well. The people, this will disadvantage our elderly people, particularly in our community. It also means that council now has another private company collecting people's personal data. And we don't know what that company's going to do with that data. I didn't hear anything from councillor Wines about assurances that that data's not going to be unsold or that data won't be shared. But Brisbane City Council is forcing parking meter users to input their private details, emails, and presumably other things, because you have to set up an account with an organisation who run this process. So I don't support that. This is just a grab for more data, more data that'll be used in ways that are unintended. And certainly I'd like to know that in this contract with the supplier, that there is no way people's personal information will be shared. Because I, for one, have some concerns about that. On a more practical level, I always get a ticket out of the machine because when the council inspectors make a mistake, which they often do, it's very handy to have your ticket to show, yes, I paid. And, and that's happened to me a couple of times. And I've been able to say, yes, and here. And residents certainly have been able to do that, too. So I, I have some concerns about the fact that there's no money. Elderly people will be disenfranchised, they don't all have smartphones, they're not all good with apps. And there will be people who need to pull up, particularly in areas like Spring Hill to go to doctors and hospitals, who want to be able to use a metered spot and can't. So I think council is actually disenfranchising people who are not necessarily competent with technology for a whole heap of different reasons. But two, I have some very serious concerns about the privacy of the data grab that's going on with this arrangement, this cozy arrangement council's entering into with its supplier.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillors free.
Thanks. I might just add to councillor Johnston's comments. And I'd appreciate if councillor Wines did just want to speak to that briefly and clarify that there are really strong protections around the data and, you know, who, where it's going, etc. I always turn my location services off on my phone because I don't want Google to know exactly where I'm, I'm moving around the city. And that's something that everyone should be doing as a matter of common sense. But I think we, we're becoming a little bit complacent in society about how much data and information we hand over to private companies and to the government. And, and I do think if council is creating a situation where it's no longer possible to park in the CBD without your name and other identifying features being collected, that, that does, to some extent, violate people's privacy and anonymity. And maybe that's, that's a justified imposition. But I don't think we want to be collecting more data or allowing private companies to collect more data than is absolutely necessary. So I would appreciate if councillor Wines just wanted to speak to that briefly.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Wines, would you like to sum up?
No, thank you, Mr Chair. Look, I will consider the requests of the correspondents councillors regarding privacy matters. I obviously don't have that, that information at hand, but I'm more than happy to consider it. The, the, on the matter of the proposal compulsorily requiring people to hand over their information, I apologise if people didn't, didn't understand me when I said you can continue to use your private credit card. You don't have to, you don't have to use Solo Park, you don't have to sign up. Debit and credit cards will still work at all the machines in that, in the manner that many are used to. Many people in the city are very used to receipts being texted to them. If someone were to go to JB Hi-Fi and make a minor purchase right now, they would offer to text you the receipt. And that's, that's, that's something that, again, you can voluntarily engage into. I know not all councillors, I know that not all councillors are committed to, like, long-term sustainability and that, that some things are deemed more important. I appreciate that. But, but that's, that's a decision that this council's made to, to reduce its waste. The, on the other matter of the accessibility matter, it's one that was absolutely taken into consideration. But considering what the state government has required all of us to do for the last two years, I, I expect the people of all ages will be competent enough with a telephone to be able to work out how to do these things. And now, I would not have said that before the requirements of the state government, before the COVID pandemic. But as a result of what's been required of us, these expectations are reasonable.
Thank you, councillor Wines. We now put this report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillors, councillor Allen, the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the second of November 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the second of November 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. In the committee last week, we received an update on a development at 19 Hasham Place, Carrawatha. This particular project, there was a preliminary approval granted for industrial uses on the site in 2010. Since then, there have been several material change of use applications and change approvals subsequently granted for warehouse and industry uses. The committee was advised that the operator of the completed development will be U Foods. The committee was also told that more than 1 million meals will be produced each week at this facility. The site area being developed is 30,441 square metres, with the building occupying a gross floor area of 13,761 square metres. Now, the, the development benefits of this particular project are that it's extremely well-located on major transport routes. It will provide economic growth for the area and jobs for the local economy. An additional 140 jobs will be provided once completed on top of the 760 jobs that already exist in the Brisbane local government area. As I noted, it's well-located and strategically located in proximity to major freight corridors. It's a high-quality building with excellent landscape design for this type of project. So ultimately, it's a great economic outcome for, for the local area and the company itself. It allows them to consolidate a number of disparate sites into one location. And I commend the report to the chamber.
Thank you. Any further speakers? No further speakers. I'll now move the report unless you want to sum up, councillor Allen. Now move the report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Davis, the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, 26th of October 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 2nd of November 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate? councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week's presentation was on flood preparedness and flood resilient homes. Brisbane is built on a flood plain, so it's always going to be a part of our life, which is why it's important to focus on being a flood resilient city, providing residents and businesses with the tools and information to help predict and plan for a potential flood event. Council provides a range of free awareness tools to educate property owners, residents, and business across Brisbane about their flood risk. Our flood awareness mapping and free floodwise reports provide information to the community about individual property's flood risk to ensure that flooding can be appropriately planned for. Each day, our flood awareness mapping is used by 1,500 people and our floodwise reports are downloaded by anywhere from 2,000 to 5,000 people. Council's website provides a range of flooding in Brisbane guides to provide the community with tips and tricks on how to mitigate and plan appropriately should there be a flood event. We encourage residents to sign up to our early warning alert system, which will provide alerts if floods from creeks, rivers, or kintides are predicted to occur. This ensures that residents can respond to a flood event before it happens. The floodwise information system and hydrometric telemetry network, which accesses council's early warning alert system, has been optimised to further improve council's ability to respond effectively to flood events. In order to ensure we build a more resilient city, this administration launched the Flood Resilient Homes Programme in 2018. The programme targets residents who experience frequent flooding and empowers residents to make their properties more resilient, ensuring they recover quickly from flood events. The programme has focused on homes in Rosalie, Anala, Wavel Heights, Camp Hill, Capera, and West End within Home Services to provide a free tailored property report and incentive scheme for eligible properties. To date, 246 in-home services have conducted, have been conducted, resulting in 130 retrofits and one house raise. We heard in the committee that for these residents, the fear of flooding is all-consuming. This programme has ensured that they no longer have to fear a flood event and can know that their life can go on after a flood event and return back to normal very, very quickly. This programme has been so successful that it has since been adopted by the Queensland government, which mirrors our own programme, as well as Suncorp, who have designed one house that can withstand all natural events, from flooding to bushfire, to encourage resilient homes. Mr Chair, we also had a petition requesting council install a dog-off-leash area at the grassed area on the corner of Evans Road and Bow Desert Road, Maruka. I commend the report and I leave further debate to the chair, to the House.
Further speakers? councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And I rise to-
And I rise to, to speak in particular about the petition that we have here today for a dog park in Maruka. And this is a little bit of a, a little bit of a journey that we've been on for this to become a dog park. And I'm, I'm pleased to report to council that after eight years, we've finally succeeded in this, this area becoming dog park. One of the issues I have in, in Maruka in particular is that a lot of the parks either flood or are very narrow, so they're too close to homes to actually, to enable a dog park to be put in without affecting the adjoining residents. We have a large stretch of land along Bodeset Road. When Bodeset Road used to be a transport and main roads, road, there was a large section of land there that was left as road reserve. And for years now, it looks largely like parkland, but it isn't parkland, so we haven't been able to put infrastructure on that site. I have been working with local residents to do a petition. So we had a petition from, signed by over 800 residents to have that land converted from road reserve to parkland. It sounds like something simple, but from my years of experience in dealing not only with council, but transport and main roads and getting different advice from different political people, it was, I was often getting contrary advice. So it was good this year or last year, when this came to council, that I had a very positive response from councillor Fiona Cunningham, I think it was last year, who actually said, look, and I remember writing the words down when we were going, debating this particular idea of a, of this land becoming parkland. Councillor Fiona Cunningham actually said, well, I want to do things differently. And it was quite interesting to have been able to work with councillor Cunningham, who has actually supported me in this process of getting this land changed from road reserve to parkland. And I think it's a bit of a model for the city to see, there's lots of land across our city that is currently road reserve, to see it go through this process. So it had to go through, we had to write to various people in council and we had to take it to the state for approval, we had to advertise it and so forth. But in the end, we got through this long, arduous process and this land, early this, a couple of months ago, became parkland. And I think that's, it was previously no man's land, part of it, and it was actually being used as a car park by the staff at Evans Deacons. And Evans Deacon was where the Story Bridge was built. So it was, it has been a car park for workers for a number of years. And during that time, we've had it resurfaced and planted and done up, so most residents think it is actually parkland. So what, so what this has allowed by having this land changed from road reserve to parkland has meant that I've been able to spend, spend some of my suburban initiative fund on getting a dog park put in. So we're getting a dog park put in, and next year, I'll work with the community to do a history project and we'll go through a naming for this parkland as well. So I actually acknowledge that, councillor Cunningham, in a letter that I sent to all of Salisbury and all of Maruka acknowledged your assistance with this, because I think sometimes it's good to be able to work across the aisle and get a good outcome. I know oftentimes we are bickering, but sometimes, and I think it's good for the public to actually hear that sometimes we actually can sort things out without bickering. So it's a huge chunk of land. It's a really good outcome for the residents of my area, but it's a really good outcome for the city, and I hope other councils will use that as a way of getting more parkland in their suburbs as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Griffiths. Further speakers? Councillor Free.
Thanks, Chair. I also rise to speak on the flood resilient programme item. I found it really interesting to hear some of the rhetoric around the, this programme when it was sort of last talked about in the chamber. And the, I, I think even in this, this report, there are some kind of interesting comments that are worth reflecting on more deeply, because I think sometimes the unquestioned assumptions of our city, they just become accepted when, when they should be critiqued a little bit more. So, you know, there's, there's a line in here that talks about the, the, the four primary sources of flooding occur from rivers, creeks, storm surges and overland flow. I, I kind of think that's wrong. Actually, the, the cause of flooding is building houses in stupid places. And unfortunately, for a long time, this city has continued to allow developers to build in areas which are extremely flood vulnerable. And the Chair acknowledged that in her comments as well. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't try to turn that around. Unfortunately, we're continuing to see this council administration approve new developments, including residential developments, in areas which are extremely prone to flooding. The council administration seems to rely heavily on the one-in-a-hundred-years flood marker, the, that AEP 1% annual exceedance probability. But my understanding is that even, even the 74 floods was higher than that. There's a kind of, a certain hubris or arrogance embodied in this kind of thinking about how we develop our city, that we can just continue to build and intensify more and more in the flood, flood zone. And occasionally, we'll raise a house up or we'll retrofit some houses so they can be hosed out after a flood. That's kind of a cop-out to me. What we really should be doing is expanding the flood buyback scheme and, and converting more of this really low-line flood-prone land back into public green space, particularly where residents and owners are keen to sell. The administration's current strategy is just creating a bigger problem for future generations, because we know the flooding is, flood risks are going to increase over time due to global warming. We know that the more intensive construction there is in terms of impervious concrete surfaces and more buildings down on the flood plain, the more that increases the risk of water being pushed into other neighbouring properties or indeed water not being able to flow away as quickly. It's, it's really disappointing to me that this council administration pats itself on the back for, for what I think is a pretty tokenistic and limited response. I acknowledge that for the, the residents who participated in this particular programme, they've had good experiences and, or some of them, I presume most of them. But this is a distraction from the main game, and it seems like the council is throwing a little bit of money at helping people renovate their homes to be a little more flood resilient, when actually what the council should be doing is completely banning new development in, in those most flood vulnerable areas and buying back sites that are highly vulnerable to flooding over time. The council used to do this a little bit more, it seems. And I can't for the life of me understand why the council has moved away from that strategy. I presume it's just cost-cutting. I presume that council doesn't want to buy back more private properties because it's too expensive, so instead, yeah, so instead, they're just trying to renovate homes and get the power points above the flood level and that sort of stuff. But we're kidding ourselves, and, and I say this, this isn't like a party political thing. I'm just trying to appeal to the common sense of the councils in this chamber. We're kidding ourselves if we think that Brisbane isn't going to be hit by more severe floods in the future, that some of those floods are potentially going to be even more serious than the 74 and the 2011 floods, and that the, the costs of recovering from those floods are going to be significantly greater if we're continuing to allow people to live in these highly flood prone areas. I've got a big chunk, West End is really on the front line of this. There's a lot of low-line parts of West End where governments and councils, right back through the decades, should never have allowed or encouraged subdivisions and allowed people to build in those areas. And obviously, now council is faced with a bit of a tricky challenge, because you don't want to force people out of their homes, and that's fair enough. But if people want to move, if, if there's an opportunity to buy back some of these sites, then that's really what council should be doing, particularly when there's also shortage of public green space. It's a win-win. Reduce the city's future burden and future risk in terms of flood-prone properties and also create new public green space and public facilities. A lot of the parks in my ward, places like Ollie Park, were once dominated by residential housing. And after a major flood, I think close to 100 years ago now, the council administration and residents were wise enough to convert that area of housing back into public green space, because they said, oh, we've made a mistake, we shouldn't have allowed people to build houses here, this area is too flood prone, let's stop doing that. And that's, that's an approach that we should be taking to other parts of the city. I, I get that this is complex and difficult, I'm not trying to oversimplify the problem, but I, I just really want to highlight that while maybe it seems like a good thing on the face of it, this flood awareness and preparedness and flood resilience programme is not enough, it is nowhere near enough to reduce the city's increasing vulnerability to flooding. I've seen so many new developments happen down in that West End flood plain since 2011, and been genuinely shocked that council's development assessment team and the flood assessment team, et cetera, are approving this stuff. The framework kind of forces them to, in some senses, because we're only going by that 1% AEP, the, the one-in-a-hundred-years flood level, when we really should be setting a higher level than that. There's going to come a time at, at some point in the future when all those basement car parks fill up with floodwater, and the body corporates who manage those buildings aren't going to have the resources to, to maintain the pumps and clear those facilities out. And I, I think the administration has been a little bit cavalier when they accept the developers' applications and they accept the flood engineer reports, to say, don't worry, it'll be fine, Wyvenham Dam's going to be managed better in the future, it'll stop future flooding, or don't worry, the car parks had some pumps built in, therefore we'll be able to pump all the floodwater out. These sort of highly tech, tech-focused solutions that rely on sort of hard infrastructure and, and technology that can fail and that does fail from time to time is not as good a solution, as respecting the fact that a river is a moving thing. It is a, it's a natural phenomenon that can't easily be constrained by retaining walls and, and backflow valves and all that sort of stuff. We need to give the river more room to move, and we need to recognise that flooding is part of the natural cycle of the river. And, and doing so means that we have to stop allowing people to build more housing down there. That shouldn't be a controversial position, but I've been reading through some of the historical records of how every, every two or three decades, the city goes through this reawakening where it realises, oh, no, we've made a mistake, we shouldn't have let people build down here, it's, it's too vulnerable to flooding. And then gradually, people forget, and, and the city forgets, and the public servants forget, and the politicians forget, until the next flood happens, and then everyone's asking questions all over again, saying, how was this allowed to happen? Who, who was the negligent buffoon who allowed people to develop down here? And it turns out that it's a collective project of forgetting and kowtowing to the interests of the private property sector that continually assure administrators and, and public officials that it's safe and they've done the research and they know, know that it's fine. But those developers who are building down there, they're not the ones dealing with the long-term impacts. The residents who end up buying and living there in good faith on the assumption that, that it is safe to do so, and the council are the entities that end up paying the costs. And I, I just really, really feel frustrated that we're, that we're kicking this can down the road, where I've seen, like, there are streets around east Brisbane that flood every time there's a high tide, and I still see subdivisions being allowed to increase the density in those precincts. We've, we've seen the modelling from, that, that shows how sea levels are going to rise with climate change. We, we know this problem is going to get worse over time, but all we're doing is giving a few homeowners a bit of money to put their house on stumps or convert the downstairs area to take out the carpets or whatever. That's, that's a nice start, but it's not the main game. It's, it's, it's crumbs, it's chump change. We have to be spending a bit more money now to get on top of this problem, so that we can, so that we don't have to incur significantly high costs down the line. I strongly encourage councillors, if you haven't read it, to, to check out the book, River with a City Problem, which chronicles the long history of Brisbane city councils' failures to plan properly for flood risks in this city. It's, it's something we need to pay a lot more attention to.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Maddick.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to rise and speak in regards to this item and the comments that councillor Free made. And to preface what I have to say, I, I don't mean to criticise you, I genuinely don't. I understand what you're saying and your own perspectives in your short time within this chamber, and not appreciating the depth and the history of what this administration has done in regards to managing flooding within this city. But I need to start at the beginning and clarify a lot of the, the comments that you've made. Going back to Campbell Newman's time when he was first elected in 2004, prior to that time, all of the flooding records within this city were kept within the organisation and not publicly available. He was the first Lord Mayor that came out, when we were going through the extreme of the drought, to talk about flooding and to talk about the flooding reports. Throughout our time in this chamber, I, as chairman of, of, of Environment, Parks and Sustainability at that time, stood here, as every chair has proudly stood here, with the newspaper clippings of the then Sawley administration and all of the councillors that were no longer in this chamber, who were chairs of that respective portfolio. And councillor Cummings will quite clearly will remember that, and so will councillor Griffiths, of the secrecy of the then administration in regards to all of the flooding reports at, at that time. In fact, Sawley took all the flooding reports at the time and wheeled them into this chamber in order to provide commercial confidence over them. Newman was the first Lord Mayor who actually made the flooding reports publicly available through all the libraries. Up until that point, the issue of overland flow relied on the 1974 figures, and they were, they were as thinly veiled as you could possibly think of. People had to guess and estimate and talk to the neighbours about the safety of their property and where they were buying, in your suburb and in my wards as well, in Paddington and Rosalie, and all the other flood-affected areas. He was lambasted at the time by the then Labour opposition and by the state government as to why he was even talking about these things when the state was going through a drought. But he stood strongly on that point because he believed in honesty and accountability to the people of Brisbane. He believed in making sure that those flooding reports were made public. Councillor Griffiths can make those comments and councillor Cummings can pretend, and I know he's got a grin on his face, he does, these things don't mean anything to him. But that is the reality of it. He was the first Lord Mayor to make them available. He was the first Lord Mayor to put them on council's website, freely available for all Brisbane residents to have a look at in regards to overland flow and flooding. He invested money into all of the science to bring those figures up to date and continue to update them as regularly as he could, so that every Brisbane resident, every time they took on a property settlement, as part of their conveyance, that data was available to them freely, so they could work out whether they wanted to buy that property or not, and how it was going to be adversely or possibly adversely affected by an overland flow event or another storm event. He is the first Lord Mayor to stand here publicly in this chamber and, and continue to reiterate to everyone in this city that Brisbane is a flood-prone city. It has been, it is, and it will be in the future. He was the first, first Lord Mayor of this city to stand here and tell Brisbane that we have faced flooding before and we will face it again, and that was before 2011. And after 2011, when we had the, when the state government undertook its, its commission of inquiry, he was the only person that stood up and said, and we will flood again. So he has never made a secret of that fact. He was the first Lord Mayor to seriously look at and evolve and develop the buyback programme and look at homes and places within a one-in-two or one-in-one-year event. Prior to that, there wasn't there. Councillor Griffiths embraced the programme wholly. He continued to try and lobby for all of his residents down in flood-prone areas in Rockleigh and other places, for council to buy them back. In my own suburbs, within Rosalie Village, Paddington, Milton, Tuwong and Orkinflower, that was what we did as well. And this is the kind of thing that went on. He was the only Lord Mayor to do that. He was the only Lord Mayor that invested in that programme. He was the only Lord Mayor that continues to do it.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor. Will councillor Maddick take a question?
I will.
Thanks.
Through, through you, Chair. Thanks, councillor Maddick. Do you think that council should be approving new residential developments down on the, the flat of the West End flood plain that was flooded in 2011?
That's a question that's been asked in this chamber repeatedly over the, all those years, and I'll give you the honest answer is yes, because through the work that council did in the flood mapping, through the commission of inquiry that the state government held, there were recommendations that were brought down about managing flooding. We live in a flood-prone city. If you want to start resuming houses, you're going to resume half of your ward, you're going to resume half of mine. We're going to talk, look at councillor Howard's ward as well, over in Morningside with councillor Cook, St Lucia as well. Half this city is flood-prone. Most of councillor Griffiths' ward, he won't be a councillor anymore, because we will resume it for open space. So the reality is resume, resume most of this city.
Point of order to you, councillor Maddick. Will councillor Maddick take a question?
Will you take another question?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Maddick, what do you think would be the impact on housing affordability if we were to ban the development of, of buildings in the flood plains in Brisbane?
Thank you, councillor Murphy, and that is an excellent point, Mr. Chairman. You want to start resuming houses in all kinds of areas, it's going to escalate the price of housing within this city, because half of it will be empty, and people are going to have to move to other cities. They'll have to move to Logan and other places to live, because there won't be anywhere here. The whole point of the planning process, the whole point of all the flooding work that's been done by officers over all these years, the whole point of the commissioning inquiry was to manage flooding. You cannot stop it, but you need to mitigate as best you can. The whole point of the flood resilience home programme was after the last event that we had down at Rosalie, where Graham Quirk looked at it and said, how are we going to manage this? Are we seriously going to come through and resume half of Rosalie Village? Are people going to actually accept that as reality? Because people enjoy living down there. They love the lifestyle, they understand where they live. they live, they want to do the best they can with what they've got." And that's why we introduced this programme, around helping people become more resilient, around education, and in some instances also, where people wanted to about buying those properties back. This programme is leading the way on what we can try and do about managing flooding throughout our city, because it is a reality. You cannot go and just resume, you cannot just stand there and go, "Well, this is too hard, I'm not going to let people live here." Because where, if not here, then where? That's the question you need to ask yourself. And this administration has done more than any other council in all of Queensland in being able to manage that kind of stuff, because we accept the reality of it, and so do a lot of residents as well. In my area where they trialled this, yeah, there were people that weren't happy with it, like you, they said, "Well, that's okay, you want to fix a few cabinets and do a bit with the floor, that's fine, but how are you going to stop the water?" Answer is, you're not. But the majority of people that took the programme on were actually grateful and supportive of it, because they did the things they needed to, so that when the floodwater comes through again, they hosed it down, they cleaned it up, and they moved on. And that was what it's about, that's the whole point of this programme, about making homes more resilient, not flood-proof. You cannot flood-proof this city at all. Otherwise, half those councils over there that are like speaking to you about this stuff will not be there. Those houses will not be there, those people will not be there. And is that what governments are supposed to do?
Point of order, Chair?
Point of order, councillor Sri.
Will councillor Matic take another quick question?
Will you take another question, councillor Matic?
Yeah, absolutely.
I wish we had more time for this conversation, because I think it's an important one, and I appreciate the dialogue. I guess, I'm imagining in a future where the sorts of events we've seen in the past could happen as often as once every two or three years for some of these low-line areas. I really hope that's not the case, but that's what some of the modelling suggests might be possible. The things which were, flood events which were once considered once in 50 years or once in 100 years, become once in every five years or once in every two years. Do you really think that if we get to that point, and I know it's an if, and I know we don't know for sure, but if we get to that point, surely we do have to talk seriously about transitioning people out of some of these most... I'm not talking about the entire inner city.
Right question, please councillor Sri. On indulgence, you've gone a long way.
Sure, thank you, Chair. But would you agree that at some point there does have to be a serious conversation about resuming those most vulnerable homes?
But councillor Sri, if you look at the history of flooding within this city, in the late 1800s to early 1900s, we literally had one-in-100-year events in a two-year period. So those issues that you're talking about already exist, but as a city, we need to be able to deal with what we've got. Because that, again, it goes back to the question, if not there, then where? If you do not allow people to live in those spaces, then where can they live? And if we do not have to adapt the architecture, the engineering and all of those other things, then what else can we do? After the commission of inquiry, the issue of car parks, electrical powerboards, air conditioning units and all those other things that previously were placed within car parks, all of that was conditioned and enforced through all of the different councils, so they were placed at higher levels on rooftops or somewhere else. So that at the end of the day, if the car park flooded down along the riverside front there, it was just a question of being able to hose it down and getting back to business. This is ultimately where we need to be, this is what this administration does, this is what the chair oversees and the officers are doing right now. It's constantly about adaption. You have to understand it is about adaption, it is not about being able to stop it. You will never stop a flood. This is about mitigation, it has always been about that. This administration has a strong track record on that and proudly stands on it. Our mates over there on the other side could mock and tell you all kinds of stories, but the truth speaks for itself. All of the news reports are there, the reports are there, the inquiry is made by the government is there, the recommendations are there, the work that Campbell Newman did, the work that Graham Quirk has done, the work that now the Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinner is continuing to do. It is all there for you to see and read. You're smart enough to know. Just go back through the history and have a look at it, and you will see that we are managing what we have to manage and dealing with the reality of the situation, as opposed to dealing with the politics or dealing with the unknowns, sorry, dealing with, trying to deal with uncertainty, to bring certainty in a place that cannot resolve it. This city floods, it always will, but this administration will always be on the side of residents to support them to get through it.
Councillor Matic, you'll talk about councillor Johnston.
Right, well, I wasn't going to speak on this item, but I definitely am now. Flood awareness and flood resilience. And I'll just make some brief political remarks first. It's pretty clear to me now what councillor Matic is up to. You know, he's been sidelined by the current leadership team, and it's pretty clear to me that he's off to join up with Campbell Newman's folly with the Liberal Democrats. So I'm presuming that that sick love story that he was just promoting in this place...
Councillor Johnston, can I bring you back to this report, please?
Well, it was all about Campbell Newman from Peter Matic.
Councillor Johnston, to the report, please, now.
Okay. No, I know. So...
Councillor Matic, please.
So let me be clear. Councillor Matic said repeatedly about the LNP's history on flooding in this city, that it was all about mitigating and managing flooding. Now, let me be clear, that is the opposite of what this administration has been doing for years in this place, years and years and years. After the floods, this council did an independent inquiry into the floods, and it put out a bunch of recommendations about how to actually mitigate flooding in this city, and that included putting in backflow valves. And do you know what happened? Council did councillor Matic's ward, they did some of that, they did councillor Howard's ward, they did some of that, and they did a few others elsewhere, but there are about 35 of those locations that this council has never, ever acted upon. That's what I know, and there's about 15 of them in my ward, it is shocking. They're not even on the long-term infrastructure plan, they're not funded. This council fails to fund stormwater drainage upgrades, you get heavy rain in this city now, and the drains back up in low-lying parts of my ward. Flood resilience and management in this city has been mismanaged by this administration like nobody's business. Let's look at this report. Now, we were told this new scheme, which did replace the buyback scheme, right? So council did use to buy back houses, it wasn't a lot, but it was those most at risk, it was those that went under regularly. And I represented Rockleigh and parts of Sherwood, still that happens regularly, it's distressing for those residents in the back of your own pilly. And those people who want buyback, let me tell you, it wasn't some folly they went out on, it was because it was distressing to be flooded multiple times a year. So let me be clear, same with councillor Griffiths.
Excuse me, please.
This administration cut the flood buyback schemes, that's what this administration did. Not only that, and this is the worst bit, and this is why councillor Matic's little speech here tonight was sick, sick. Do you know what happened? Do you know what happened after the 2011 floods? Do you know what the Lord Mayor of this city did? Two months after the floods, he resigned, he left, and he decided to pursue his own political ambitions. He was not interested in doing the hard work of cleaning up in this city. He abandoned ship. So please don't stand up and say Campbell Newman had anything to do with any of this, because he wasn't even here. He wasn't even here. So let's be clear, this administration continues to approve developments in parts of this city where there should be nothing built on them. The state government is doing it as well, and I object to it wherever I can. It's almost 200 years since a white man stepped foot on my ward, when pamphlet and Finnegan just popped on the canoe across Oxley Creek. And guess what? That's in two years. And guess what? In that 200 years, there's parts of my ward that hasn't been built on until the last few years by council and the state government, and it is because these areas are catastrophically flood-prone. And what's worse, and this council, this is where this council is so culpable, it's not funny, is this council allows metres of fill, metres and metres of fill to go in, and you get houses that are built up like this, and you've got houses on a slab next to them that cannot escape the floodwater. And every single time council does it, and every single time the state government does it, under both of their planning schemes, they will make flooding worse for the neighbourhood and for others that cannot raise their houses. Now, I want to finish with this, the resilient homes programme. This started off as a trial, but now, do you know where it is? Rosalie, Ynala, Wavel Hills, Camp Hill, Capera and West End. Councillor Griffiths, is there any flood management happening in your ward? How much of your ward flooded in 2011? And does any of your suburbs that flooded on that list? I've got 10 suburbs in my ward, most of which flooded, not a single one. So when you stand up and you say proudly, "This council is always, it's always about mitigating and managing," only in about six suburbs in Brisbane, and not in the suburbs that flooded really badly. So this administration should be ashamed of its track record since the 2011 floods. It will flood again in this city, and this council has left residents woefully underprepared, woefully. And the only thing that council's actually done is push insurance premiums up through the roof, so that people can't afford flood insurance anymore, and they're not doing the necessary practical steps to address flood mitigation. And it's fascinating to see, fascinating to see, that councillor Davis is standing up here and saying, "Oh, look at these wonderful suburbs," not the ones that actually flood in this city, not in my ward, not in councillor Griffiths' ward. There's no backflow valves, there's no stormwater drainage, there's no flood buyback. Oxley Creek is a disgusting, toxic mess, and it's not being cleaned up. There's no land use change happening, we're getting industrial businesses still bringing approved along that corridor, and that was recommended to be stopped under the Flood Royal Commission.
Mr Chair, point of order. It would be very helpful if councillor Johnston came back to what the topic of the committee report was. Thank you.
Allowed the debate to be fairly free-ranging, but councillor Johnston, if you could, as you said you were going to conclude on a point a couple of minutes ago, please conclude and keep it to the report.
Well, going all the way now. So let's be clear, it's all new to councillor Davis, but I'm the one that lived through this, along with some other councillors here, and it was catastrophic in this city. And year after year, I've stood up in this place and pushed for flood mitigation. And to hear councillor Matic, who's had a Rolls-Royce run in his really marginal LNP ward that he could barely hang on to, get every single thing that's happened, backflow valves, stormwater drainage, flood resilient homes, to stand up and crow about it when there are other parts of this city where council has done nothing, is shameful. You should be ashamed of what you've done by not making sure all suburbs in Brisbane are eligible for these schemes. Instead, you are picking winners where it is politically convenient for you, and you are doing nothing, nothing, to support the suburbs.
Councillor Mackay, point of order.
There is nothing about this in the report that we're supposed to be talking about, relevance.
Councillor Johnston.
Of course it's in the report. Let's be clear, councillor Mackay's not standing up to defend his suburbs, they're not getting anything in this report either. Let's be clear, this administration has picked a few suburbs out now, is picking winners, and it's not offering the same services to all the residents of Brisbane. It's not investing in the necessary infrastructure, the planning scheme doesn't suit the needs of the city any longer, and there's no buyback for where people are catastrophically affected by regular flooding. You failed, you have massively failed. And it's one of the most important and driving reasons that I'll stay here until I possibly can at the very last point in time, because this city, this city needs, needs to do better on flood management. That's it, I'll outlast you councillor Mackay, so see you later if you want to go, because I lived through one of the most catastrophic things that you can ever live through in this city, with residents in my ward, and this council has failed, failed to properly address the flood mitigation and resilience measures that are actually needed, to make sure there is good planning that takes into account our flood-prone city, to make sure our infrastructure, stormwater and backflow valves are up to date and can deal with overland flow and floods from rain and creeks. And we need to make sure that we've given residents the tools to manage flooding. And this administration has this idea in their head, because they've done this in one or two of their own suburbs, that it's going to help the whole city. It doesn't, you failed, and you've let parts of this city behind.
Oh, councillor Cummings, you've had a fair bit to say, are you going to get up and speak or just keep shouting across the chamber? Okay. Any further speakers? Councillor Davis, you want to sum up?
Well, thank you very much, Mr Chair. And wow, I don't know that I've got another word to use about that commentary from the councillor from Tennyson Ward. I think it's quite interesting that the councillor indicated that nothing ever happens in the Tennyson Ward, and councillor Johnson often, in her own manner, tries to patronise those councillors that have not been in the chamber as long as she has. But you don't need to be a long-term councillor in this place, councillor Johnston, to be able to read the Suburban Works Programme, Mr Chair. It's a pretty simple document. Councillor Johnson said that there were no projects funded in her ward, and that is wrong. So on page 25, Drainage, Construction and Resilience, Christiansen Street, Yaronga, $669,000. That sounds a lot like a drainage project to me. Page 27, Stormwater Drainage Rehabilitation and Only Road Ad那里...
Councillor Johnston, please.
$282,000, Mr Chair, that sounds very much like a drainage project in Tennyson Ward to me. And, Mr Chair, councillor Johnson comes into this place often and likes to cite the ACOM report. She cites as if it's akin to the Flood Commission of Inquiry. It's an engineering report, an engineering report with a list of locations where you could feasibly install a device, not because they're needed, but because it's feasible to install it there. Nothing about cost-benefit ratios, nothing at all, only because it might be possible. So we wanted to explore all options under that, and as a result, we installed high prior, devices in our priority areas. There were 16 systems in total, including four of them in, guess which ward? In Tennyson Ward. So 25% of them, 25% of the devices went into the Tennyson Ward. Mr Chair, the council officers and the Schrinner council is doing a great deal of work, and to the points raised by councillor Matic, about what we did find as open and accessible to the residents of Brisbane prior to Campbell Newman coming into this place and making information accessible and public for people, so that they could understand what their risks were. And we continue to update that flood mapping, and we continue to engage with the community to understand what sort of things they need on that information, with regards to that information, so that they can understand on it and act appropriately on it. So I'm very proud of the work that we're doing. I'm very proud, Mr Chair, of the work on the flood resilience homes programme. It's disappointing councillor Sri for you to consider it to almost be tokenistic. Well, if you don't want it in your ward, you can just write to me, and we'll consider it for another ward. There is great work being done at the moment. As councillor Matic said, you know, based on councillor Sri's contribution, we would have to buy half of Brisbane. That's not possible.
Point of order, Chair.
We have to work with what we've got, and we will continue to do so.
Will councillor Davis take a question? No? I believe she's finished. Okay. We now move this report. All in favour of the report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 2nd of November 2021, be adopted.
Seconded, Chair.
It's been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 2nd of November 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I get to the committee report, I want to just mention a very special day that obviously is coming up on Thursday, as we all know, the 11th of the 11th is Remembrance Day. On this day, we will commemorate the anniversary of the end of World War One and honour all those who have served, died or suffered in service of our nation. In honour of the day, there will be lots of events at our city's parks and memorials, and the officers have been hard at work for the past couple of months to prepare them in advance for the day. Tens of thousands of annuals have been planted across the city to bloom just in time for Remembrance Day, along with plenty of pruning, mulching and mowing. And I want to say thank you to all the officers who have been involved in this work, they have done a great job, and I'm sure all councillors will agree when they go out to those memorials on the 11th of November, they will say they are looking fabulous. To the committee report from last week, I just had one item I wanted to clear up before I moved on to the report. We had a wonderful presentation from our manager of PSO, Scott Owen, who talked about the habitat space, natural air and habitat spaces, the work that's done in there as far as our team goes with maintenance. There was a query this morning about the potential allegation that we had stated that we built the stormwater treatment assets. I just want to clarify that by reading out what the manager wrote, said at the time. "Stormwater drainage infrastructure can be located in the street, on private property or in dedicated drainage easements, aims to minimise impacts to the road transport network, private property and the environment. Operational and maintenance activities are fundamental for the ongoing management of these assets, and the service aligns with our clean green and strategy, clean green strategy." So as I've said again, we are all about maintenance of these assets. At no point did we say we actually can... At no point did we say we actually constructed them. There was also a petition there for the committee report, which I'm happy to leave debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Marks. Any debate? Any speakers? None? Okay, councillor Marks. Okay, now move the, this report, the City Standards Committee Report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, councillor Howard, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee Report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 2nd of November 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 2nd of November 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate?
Of course there is, Mr Chair, because I have the best portfolio ever, sorry everybody else. But it is really, really important that I tell the chamber all of the things that there are to see and do around this beautiful city of Brisbane. And one of the, one of the very special things that occurred just yesterday was the 30th Birthday Gala of the concert, sorry, let me start that again, the 30th Birthday Gala Concert of the Brisbane Symphony Orchestra. It's an amazing thing to think that all of these musicians are volunteers and it's a community orchestra that has been going for 30 years. It's something that the Shriner Council is so proud to support. And of course, the founding conductor, Mr Anthony Benetti, AM, had his Order of Australia for his significant services to the performing arts. He will still remain with the orchestra, but there, we were congratulating Paul Dean for taking the reins as the chief conductor in 2021. It was a wonderful afternoon and enjoyed by all of the people who were in the fantastic city hall. And I just want to say a big congratulations to the Brisbane Symphony Orchestra for all of the joy that they bring to the people who were in the audience. I want to also mention that councillor Mackay and I attended the South Brisbane Sailing Club on Saturday evening to celebrate them being announced as the Sailing Club of the Year by Australian Sailing and that was extra special. So councillor Mackay tells me that he has been a member since he was in year six, which was a bit of a time ago, he tells me as well. But can I just say that it was a, it was a fantastic evening and it was so wonderful again to recognise the volunteers and we know that these clubs and organisations just can't, can't continue without the support of those valuable volunteers. They were so happy to show me around the, around the place and to, to give me lots of ideas of what they'd like to do in the future and they're all very excited, councillor Adams of course, about the forthcoming Olympics and the Paralympics, they're just very excited. I also attended Queriosity, which was run by Open Doors Youth Service and I just want to say what a fantastic job Open Doors Youth Service do. It's for our wonderful young gay people in Brisbane. It was fantastic to see it held at Smoked Garage, which is a, which is a venue in the valley. And I have to say, Smoked Garage has always been so supportive of our community and it, this venue needed to be a safe place for our young people and for their parents and it was something that's now held annually. Again, the Shriner Council's proud to support the event and it was, it was really special to see so many young people and for the social inclusion activities that were there and it was, it was just a lot of fun. So we went there. Of course, we had Diwali Festival, for those of you that were there, I saw a whole lot of people looking very, very special. And that was in our wonderful King George Square. And of course, that was, that was on Saturday, Friday night, that was on Friday night. And on Friday night also, I accompanied Mr Shane Hackett, who of course is the manager of our customer services. And once again, Brisbane City Council and our contact centre was nominated for the Rico Australia Customer Service Award category of the Queensland Community Achievement Awards. And this year's Queensland Community Awards were offered across seven categories, including community groups, sporting groups, aged care, business and customer service. So we were a little bit surprised to find ourselves there, but we were absolutely thrilled and delighted that we, that we made the finals. It was, there was a room full of about 200 people, but there could only be one winner and on this night it was Hello Home Doctor. So we were just thrilled to have reached the finals and it's, it's a great testimony to all of our wonderful people who work within our contact centre. You've heard me talk about that in the past and I will continue to say what a great job they do. It recognised the teams of people that we have and the individuals who have such a positive impact on our organisation, but also on the lives of people who contact Brisbane City Council. So well done, contact centre. We've got a beautiful, we've got a beautiful certificate and we're all very proud of that. So moving to the report, we had a wonderful presentation about this year's Brisbane Festival, Brightly Brisbane, was presented by Charlie Cushion, Louise Bazina. And it's always a delight to have Charlie and Louise come along to our committee and I know that we all, we all enjoyed it. We heard all about the positive feedback that we'd received on the various Brisbane Festival events and activations such as Boy Swallows the Universe. And of course, I want to say, and I think councillor Cook is online, so councillor Cook, it's wonderful to see that Arlo features in the new, in the new book by Trent Dalton. So we're very proud, Love Stories by Trent Dalton, we're very proud that one of our Brisbane City Council babies is now a star. So it's great to see Trent Dalton, of course, with that wonderful book of Boy Swallows the Universe. And we were told that, I think it's the, they've had 654 performances, no, sorry, that was for the Brisbane Festival. The actual, the actual play itself has received so much recognition, it's just quite amazing. So can I also say that the Brisbane Festival received national coverage in our major media outlets because of our Sun Supa River Fire. It was back again this year and we just know how much joy that brought to everyone. It was the highest average audience in five years on Channel Nine and it's estimated that the event reached an audience of 134 million viewers. So it's just, the work that Charlie and Louise have done over the last couple of years is just amazing. It was a fantastic report and we really thank them for all that they do and I will recommend the report to the chamber.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? I now move the report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Finance and City Governance Committee Report, councillor Cunningham.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 2nd of November 2021 be adopted.
Seconded. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 2nd of November 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thanks, Mr Chair. Our committee presentation last week was on the Shriner Council's engagement with the social enterprise sector. This is a space that the Lord Mayor and I feel particularly passionate about. It's about how we can use council's procurement budget to deliver positive outcomes for rate payers, for our economy and also for our community. Through our procurement policy, the Shriner Council has set a target for social procurement spend and we're investing record amounts with social enterprises based here in Brisbane with a spend of nearly $15 million across 39 different organisations. This means we're doubling the benefits for rate payers, not only delivering the quality services that residents need, but supporting important social causes and employment opportunities for those who are disadvantaged. The Shriner Council will continue to use our influence for a positive way to grow and promote social enterprise in Brisbane. As part of our ambition to grow this sector, we're also engaging with people on the ground to making a difference. And just last week, the deputy mayor, through her economic development portfolio, held a, and the lord mayor, held a free business forum for social enterprises. Council also recognised this sector at the Lord Mayor's Business Awards last month. We're proud of our social enterprise community here in Brisbane and the Shriner Council is doing everything it can to support it into the future. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Just briefly on this, I certainly support council engaging within supporting social enterprises, doing work that can't be done in house. However, I just want to put on record the serious pressure that some smaller social enterprises are put under to meet the requirements of these council contracts. I know personally, having spoken to some social enterprises on the north side of Brisbane that have bid for council work and been successful, were forced to bid under, under cost and are now making a loss on those contracts being delivered to council, which is putting the financial viability of not just a social enterprise, but those, those not for profit groups that operate those social enterprises at serious risk of, of collapse and bankruptcy. So I just, I hope that through all the work that councillor Cunningham has just said that this administration is doing with the social enterprise, I hope those conversations are being had at some level, that the, the, the smaller social enterprises that are desperate to get this work, to expand their operations, are having to compete with much larger organisations and having to come in much lower than those organisations. We heard earlier, we saw in those contracts, more often now that the onus is put on the lowest cost and that is it. The lowest dollar figure gets those contracts and I'm particularly concerned about local social enterprises that have engaged these contracts with council some time ago and now finding out that they are putting their financial viability under risk. So I just put that, I just put that out there and certainly hope that that is taken on board by the new chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Just to the point that councillor Cassidy made, we make special space for social enterprises, even in circumstances where they are not the cheapest option. And if the councillor has some specific inquiries or cases, I'm very happy to receive some correspondence from him on it rather than learn about it here in the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We now move this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, petitions, are there any petitions? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. I have a petition about a proposed upgrade in, of an intersection in Victory Pocket.
Thank you. Any further petitions? No further petitions? May I have a motion for receipt of petitions, please?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concern for consideration and report.
Seconded. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Griffiths that the petition as presented be received and referred to the committee concern for consideration and report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business, before we commence, general business, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? No one's standing? I call general business. Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the Olympics and the potential impacts to green space, not just in my area but across the city. I have mentioned this concern in the past in the chamber, but I wanted to highlight it again, particularly to put it on councillor Davis' radar, but also to make sure it's, that all councils in this chamber are aware of it. The current proposal for the main stadium for the Olympics is to hold those events at the Gabba. There's been some commentary in the media about the fact that the state government is largely reutilising existing venues. And I wanted to highlight very clearly that what's proposed for the Gabba is not to reuse the Gabba, what's proposed is to demolish the Gabba and rebuild the Gabba. When you look at the details of what's required for an Olympics athletics venue, when you pay close attention to the minimum diameters of the field and what the current specifications are for the Gabba Stadium, it's quite clear that in order for the Gabba to function as an Olympics venue, it will require pretty much a complete rebuild, tearing it down, right down to ground level and rebuilding it again. And the likely cost of that, that's, that's why we've seen this massive price tag of $1 billion proposed for that project. So I wanted very clearly to bust that myth and to correct the misinformation that's been circulated, particularly by the state government, these claims that the Gabba will be reused and renovated, that's not true. They are proposing to demolish the Gabba and rebuild a larger stadium on the same site. So from a sustainability perspective alone, that should be a significant concern to all councils in this chamber, particularly when there are other venues across south east Queensland that could, are perhaps better suited to function as a major athletics venue. But the other particular challenge with the Gabba Stadium is that it doesn't have room for a warm up track next door. Ideally with Olympics venues, you're supposed to have a warm up facility which is identical or as near as identical as possible to the, to the field that the athletes are competing on. That means right down to not just the diameter of the, of the track, but even the colour of the surface and the, the style of rubber used on the surface, et cetera. There is no room for Olympic standard warm up track immediately adjacent to the Gabba. And so the state government, in its infinite wisdom, has proposed that a warm up track might be located at Raymond's Park in Kangaroo Point. That's about half a kilometre away from the Gabba Stadium and the current proposal seems to be that athletes will do their warm ups in Raymond Park and then jump in a shuttle bus and be driven through a residential area to access the stadium itself. It's, it's a far cry from the standard of facility that's been provided for other Olympics venues in other cities. But the particular concern residents of my ward have is that Raymond Park is also not big enough to hold an Olympic standard warm up track, warm up track. The warm up track is supposed to have a diameter of 400, sorry, a circumference of 400 metres, it's meant to have a full size field in the middle, it needs to be accompanied by change rooms, other warm up facilities, no doubt a small stand for spectators, as well as a lot of security features in terms of high fencing, checking points, et cetera. There's not enough room for a facility like that to be built in Raymond Park without, A, removing a lot of significant trees, some which may be as old as 100 years old, and B, potentially resuming people's private homes. Now, we've had commentary from the mayor and councillor Adams in this chamber in the past and I was reassured by the mayor's comments who said, he said that he doesn't think home resumptions will be necessary in the park. But I really wanted to encourage the administration, particularly the relevant chair of parks, to just closely look at the current specs and size of Raymond Park and, and be really confident that, that a warm up track can fit in there without resuming homes. Because I don't think it can. I've talked to a number of designers, I've talked to people who worked on the Rio Olympics about the, the field specs for their warm up track. There's not room for an Olympic standard warm up track in Raymond Park, Kangaroo Point, without taking people's private homes. And the residents locally have obviously raised a range of concerns about this, in addition to the fact that some of them might be displaced. There are concerns about the loss of trees, concerns about the loss of access to green space during the lead up to the Olympics for construction. There's a whole range of facilities in the park that are very well loved, including the dog off leash area, basketball court, a community garden, et cetera, et cetera. But all of this for me highlights that maybe the Gabba simply isn't a particularly good venue for, to be the major venue, athletics venue for the Olympics. I'd like to see this council be a little more proactive and assertive about questioning the state government and posing, posing that question of are there alternatives that haven't, haven't been given enough consideration? I don't know, does, does anyone in this chamber know what the long term plan is for the Brisbane Greyhound Racing Track at Albion? Does anyone know? Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure greyhound racing will be banned at some point over the next decade. I'd like to think it'll happen sooner, but, but it's, it's, it to me seems a matter of time. At some point, greyhound racing will be banned and, and, and that's just a reality, I'm just stating the facts. I don't know when, I don't know how many years it'll take, but greyhound racing will be banned because it's a cruel, it's an inhumane, I won't even call it a sport. But that raises a really interesting question about what will happen to the Brisbane Greyhound Racing Track? Because it's right there at Albion, reasonably close to the Athletics Village at Hamilton. That area could certainly use some more public green space and there's room to include a stadium and a warm up track and a bushland reserve and urban farming and a lot of other green space uses on that, on that greyhound racing track without removing a single person's home. Similarly, just up the road at Eagle Farm, you've got two giant horse racing tracks. Even if you don't think horse racing is going to be phased out in the next 10 years, I'd like to think it will be, I could be wrong. But even if you don't think that's going to happen, you have to ask, why do we really need two giant horse racing tracks right next to each other? And, and again, I'd suggest that maybe one of those horse racing tracks would be a suitable alternative venue for the major athletics venue for the 2032 Olympics. Obviously, I don't think we should be hosting the Olympics at all, I'm going to be continuing to say that right up until the opening ceremony. I, I think it's a bad idea, I don't think it's a good economic proposition for the city and I'd prefer... it's a good economic proposition for the city and I'd prefer if we weren't hosting. But if indeed we are hosting, we need to at least make the right decisions about where these major venues go. And we need to have those conversations now, rather than three or four years down the track. I know that there have been rumblings within the federal government bureaucracy that are also critiquing and questioning the choice of the Gabba as the main venue. I know that there are, um, LNP, uh, li- Liberal Party members at the federal government level who are concerned about the choice of the Gabba as the main venue. I'm simply asking that other councillors in this chamber engage seriously with those questions, um, and, and think about whether there might be a better spot to put the major athletics venue. Because I, as the local councillor, don't want it, um, in Woolongaba. I know the state MP doesn't want it in Woolongaba. I've talked to plenty of local residents, I've talked to the PNC of East Brisbane State School, right in the shadow of the Gabba. They, they don't, they're not happy about this. Residents around Kangaroo Point, Raymond Park certainly don't want the warm-up track in their park. Um, so there's a lot of opposition building to the idea of, um, the Gabba serving as the main Olympics venue. And there are a lot of practical constraints to that side. Um, so I think this council has an obligation to, to ask hard questions of the state government and, and, and say, why are you spending a billion dollars demolishing a stadium to build another stadium on the same site when you could instead be using that money and that resources more effectively elsewhere? There are other spaces available, there are other existing athletics venues in, um, in South East Queensland that have, um, that have greater capacity than the Gabba and are already the right proportions for athletics events. Um, it's also worth noting that if, if the Gabba is redesigned to accommodate athletics events, that will mean that for cricket and AFL spectators in the future, they'll be a lot further away from the action because the, the stands and everything will have to be pulled back. Um, so I, I, I'm just a little concerned that the city is making these decisions too lightly. Some of you in this chamber are thinking to yourselves, this is still 10 years away, why are we having this discussion now? But we know that planning for these projects starts really early on. Um, if, if it, if it is the case that we're going to demolish and rebuild the Gabba stadium in time for the Ashes in 2028, that means that work's going to have to start around 2024, 2025, pretty soon. Um, and that means planning work's already having to start now. And I'm suggesting that rather than wasting that billion dollars on a project that's not good value for money, this city should be looking at alternative options. There are other sites out there, there are better options available. But it's important for this council to take a clear stand, um, talk to your federal Liberal Party colleagues as well, and put a bit of pressure on the state government so that we can get an outcome that actually benefits the city, rather than backing us into a corner.
Any further general business? Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Chair. I rise to give a report on the LGAQ's 125th Annual Conference in Mackay, which was held in, in October on the 24th to the 27th. Um, the conference was a really great opportunity for us to connect with the 77 members of councils across Queensland, understand their communities and share some innovations that are happening in their local area. Um, I think some of the, the programme highlights that I had was particularly around the council showcase, which had five, um, different councils share their experiences. Um, it started with Gundawindy Mayor, Laurence Springbourn, sharing about their hydrogen energy using household water, wastewater, um, followed by Mayor Theresa Harding, her, um, her experience of delivering Fogo in Ipswich City Council. Um, we then moved on to Mayor Rachel Chalmers from the North Burnett Council, where she shared the financial struggles that they have been having and their pathway to get into the black. Um, also Mayor Kyle Yanna from Morningtonshire Council, which is located in the Gulf of Carpentaria. He really had a, a great story to share about their enormous health challenges in that community and their strong advocacy work in getting the state to understand what's actually going on there and, and to invest in their programmes. Um, and then finally, it concluded with Conkari's, uh, no, sorry, Conkari's Shire Council's experience of hosting Australia's first Survivor Series, which was quite, quite funny. Um, another one of the highlights was the gala event that happened. Um, it acknowledged the LGAQ CEO Greg Hallam's trailblazing 29-year tenure. Now, Greg has worked with six Queensland premiers and 13 local government ministers, as well as countless MPs, mayors, councillors and council CEOs throughout his long tenure. The gala was a really fitting tribute to his commitment to local government and on behalf of our council, we thank him for his enormous efforts in that space. Uh, the final day concluded with a debate of motions, which covered everything from requesting the state government to undertake planning works and invest in various infrastructure programmes, to motions about managing sharks and crocodile populations. Um, it demonstrated how vast the needs are of Queenslanders and how together, as councillors, we play a vital role in advocating for our community. It was a fantastic event and I hope to go to many more. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Strunk?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Chair. Listen, I want to, um, speak on, on two items tonight, two events that actually, or three actually, that actually happened over the weekend. Um, the first is, uh, two celebrations of Diwali, uh, one here in King George Square, uh, which, I know councillor Howard's talked about, and, and another one out at, uh, out at Durack. Um, certainly Diwali was back in force in King George Square. My goodness, I've never seen so many people in that square ever. Uh, it was wall-to-wall and the, and I think everyone just wanted to come out and celebrate and have fun. And we did. Um, there were certainly a lot of VIPs there, uh, you know, giving, uh, you know, rousing speeches and things like that. But I think most people were there just to watch the entertainment, watch the singing, the dancing, mostly dancing, uh, and, uh, and certainly that, uh, it wa, it was spectacular. Um, and then, uh, on, that was Friday night, and then Saturday night, I had the, the pleasure to go out to, uh, Durack at the Islamic College for the Tamil, uh, celebrations for Diwali. And, uh, and, uh, again, it was very well attended. Um, again, people were there to have fun. It wa, I suppose the whole programme went up, went for about four hours. I, I was there three hours at the time. And then the Grand Mufti and I, after about three hours, we said, I think we'd better go home. And, uh, so the Grand Mufti, who, uh, is the, is the Imam for the, for the school, uh, he, uh, he, he was an excellent host, of course, for the, for the Tamil group and, uh, and, nothing was too much trouble. Um, uh, they, they kept coming up to him, asking him questions in regards to issues that were arising from, that were arising, and he quite calmly, um, let them know that they could do this, they can do that. And, uh, and everything just went so, so well, actually. Um, I'd like to acknowledge, of course, the, the Tamil, uh, the Tamil community president, uh, Balu Sami, um, who, and his group and, uh, his, his management group, who did an excellent job, uh, with the, um, with the, with the programme. Um, also, um, Pallani Trivada was there as well, who's a former member of FICQ, along with the current president, uh, Ba- Balu Sami, who was there as well. Um, it was, uh, it was a spectacular night. Um, I went home a bit tired, uh, but that was, that was fine. Um, I went home happy. And then, uh, on Sunday, something very special happened, uh, in the Richlands area of my ward. Um, there was a rededication, uh, of a, in the, of an Italian memorial that was first, um, facilitated by the former councillor for the Richlands Ward, Les Bryant, um, back in, uh, 2005. Um, so the memorial was to, um, uh, to celebrate the, uh, the Italian, um, community, um, who, uh, first settled that area in the late 1920s. Um, and how that came about, of course, is that, um, Richlands was divided up into parcels between four and 10 acres back then, 10 acres, and, uh, for small cropping, for small crop farming. And the price was quite reasonable and it didn't take long for the, uh, for the word to get around, um, after a couple of ads in some of the Brisbane papers. And, uh, and they were inundated with inquiries. But what quite ama, what quite amazes me is the fact that just as that, that those parcels were coming onto the market, guess what else was happening in 1930? A worldwide depression. And, uh, and you can imagine, now, it takes guts, doesn't it? During the worldwide depression, which was coming on quite rapidly, uh, even here in Australia, uh, that, uh, that a commitment to, uh, to actually purchase land and equipment to operate that farm, right, uh, during a, during a worldwide depression, I tell you, that takes commitment and dedication. And, uh, and of course, the Italian families, you couldn't have picked a, a better group of people to actually undertake this work, uh, and undertake that lifestyle. Um, so the rededication saw a number of those families, uh, come to the, to the rededication. And what had actually happened was that there, the initial, uh, monument was built, uh, on the front side of the Richmond State School. And then the Richmond State School was de, decommissioned and Brisbane City Council bought it, did it up, it's heritage-listed building. And the monument was caught on the front side and no one was actually viewing it anymore. No one could really see it because, uh, what had happened, all the, all the traffic after the redevelopment was happening on the other side. So Rick Formagoni, who was a, one of the, uh, one of the founding, uh, uh, members of the families, uh, that initially pioneered the area, um, he, uh, he came in and saw me and said, listen, this was just before the COVID was going to hit. Um, he, he came in and saw me and says, listen, can we move the memorial on the other side? And I said, well, we'll, we'll have a look at that, we'll see what it's going to cost. Uh, let me get a hold of one of our really great council officers, Dean Middleton, and see if that's, uh, if we can do that. And Dean, uh, to his credit, uh, embraced the idea and worked, uh, to get that moved, um, with a bit of money from the, from the trust fund. And, uh, and it all happened. And then we were going to open it up just before the pandemic hits and, uh, and then, of course, that all had to be postponed for about two years. So that happened last Sunday. Uh, as I say, we had about 50, 50 members of, uh, a number of the families that were actually on the monument, listed on to the, onto the monument, uh, that came out. And it was a big celebration, but more importantly, it was really like a reunion. And of course, they were all speaking in Italian, so I couldn't really understand a lot of what they were saying. But, uh, certainly, certainly we had the consulate there, the Italian consulate here from Brisbane, um, Salvatore, and, uh, and he, uh, he stayed probably longer than he would mo, most likely stay on these sort of events because he was really having a great time as well. And he loves Brisbane. And he's coming to the end of his term and he's going to have to go back to Italy and, uh, and retrain for the next deployment. Uh, and, uh, he's really said, he, he would love to stay in Brisbane because he's really enjoyed his time, as, as these Italian families have as well. So I just wanted to say those few words and just thank again Rick Formagoni for making and taking virtually about two years to pull all this together, along with Dean Middleton. And, uh, they've done a terrific job. So if you ever get a chance to have a look, uh, at the, at what happened out in Richlands, um, in, in the not, late 1920s, uh, and see some of the names on that monument, who knows? You may be, there may be relatives here in the chamber. Uh, who knows? But, uh, it's there on display and it's, uh, and it's really, it's something that we can all be proud of. Thank you, Chair.
Any further speakers? Oh, councillor Matic?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Deputy Chairman. I, I also rise to give a report on my attendance at the 125th LGAQ Conference, which, uh, this year was held in Mackay. Uh, as councillor Hutton said, it was, uh, it was a great event. Um, there was, uh, a lot of debate that went on. It, it just goes to reinforce, um, the vital role that local government plays, very fabric of our communities across the entire state. And the, uh, for many of the regional councils, uh, with a small rate base but a, but a, a large area to manage, uh, they do an extraordinary job of being able to, um, make the dollar stretch and in their representations, both the state and federal government in regards to grants. Uh, there was a lot that was covered in the conference. Um, there was the, uh, the economic report that was provided by Bernard Salt, which is, is always informative. Uh, and there were a lot of questions from the floor in regards to, um, the, uh, the migration, if you like, of both the peoples from both New South Wales and Victoria, uh, into Queensland, uh, the impact on property prices, uh, the impact on services and what it means for, uh, the future of our local governments. There was, as councillor Hutton said, a, um, very informative presentation by a number of different councils, uh, highlighting innovations that they're undertaking within their own, uh, areas in regards to both technology but also economically in order to meet the sustainability challenges moving forwards. Uh, and of course, um, the farewell of Greg Hallam as the CEO, as councillor Hutton said, almost 30 years of service, uh, to the, the LGAQ, but most importantly, to all of Queensland's councils. His contribution is immeasurable in the work that he has done in his representations, um, the services that he has created through LGAQ that benefit the, the vast majority of councils throughout the state, of which they could not provide without the assistance of LGAQ. Uh, but there are two important things that I think that he must be credited for, uh, in his service to councils. Firstly, his representations, uh, to the government, uh, in regards to the Chair of the CCC and the conduct, uh, of councillors, of how they were dealt with in Logan City Council, I think is fundamental, uh, to all councillors across, um, the state. Uh, it was his strong representations to the parliamentary committee, uh, that, uh, were have been of enormous benefit to all of us. And we wait to see what the recommendations of that are. Uh, and also importantly, his strong recommendations, uh, in regards to the OIA, uh, and the comments that were made by one of the regional councillors, uh, in the ordinary course, uh, simply wanting to assist his community in regards to the rollout of COVID vaccines, uh, and then expressing an opinion resulted in an OIA referral. And so, um, through the strong representations, uh, that Greg as CEO and through the LGAQ, um, has done, uh, we will hopefully see now through, um, an inquiry into the OIA, uh, improvements, uh, in the way that they conduct business. It was interesting to hear the Chair of the OIA, uh, at the conference, uh, to her credit, she did come, and provided, uh, her own feedback. It was interesting to, uh, listen to her speak about the conduct of matters and that, uh, they are finding it particularly challenging, um, to decide on matters and that they are very much reliant on the precedent that is set through OIA, OIA hearings and findings found either by court or by the tribunal, which is greatly concerning, uh, for, for all of those councillors who have been referred, who are on a very long, long waiting list, uh, waiting to, to have their fates determined in many instances, that the I, the OIA is struggling both to process those, um, matters but also to, um, hear them fairly. And that they are relying upon precedent law, uh, in order to make those determinations. So, um, at the end of the day, Mr. Deputy Chairman, the OIA is, is important to have, uh, within, uh, the system, uh, given the conduct occurred of, of, of some councils and some council laws. Uh, but ultimately, uh, the vast majority of us do our job, do it properly, do it honestly and fairly, and we're here for the right reason. And so we hope that, uh, whatever comes out of this, uh, hearing will ultimately improve the system and make life better and easier for all of us. And ultimately about the accountability as well. Um, uh, in closing, it was, again, a, a great event. Um, there was, uh, a, a great amount of fellowship that is always at these events, great learnings from many, many of the councils in, and how they run their organisations and the findings that they have, but also their ability to engage with their communities. Uh, and it's always a great honour and privilege to be able to represent Brisbane at those events. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Matic. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy?
Now, thanks very much, Deputy Chair. I'd just like to, um, move the suspension of standing orders at the moment, um, to allow me to move the following urgency motion. The Brisbane City Council ends the delays and stops holding up the construction of the Beams Road rail overpass.
Seconded.
Yes, seriously, councillor Marks.
Do you?
I've just emailed the motion to the clerks here.
Uh, three minutes.
Thanks very much, Deputy Chair. This is urgent because the community is suffering from this LMP Lord Mayor's deliberate political interference in this matter. All other levels of government are coming to the table, but LMP councillors are doing everything in their power to slow the progress of the Beams Road rail overpass. We want to know why the Lord Mayor Adrian Shruno and LMP councillor Sandy Landers are standing in the way of this important project on the north side. It's urgent because council officers and state transport department staff have had over 20 meetings on this project and now still this LMP council is refusing to tick off on this project. They are delaying approvals for minor bureaucratic reasons. Deputy Chair, this is urgent because the proof...
Just one moment, please, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Deputy Chair.
Councillors, please?
This, this is urgent...
Councillor Cassidy, when you're ready, you can continue.
Thanks, Deputy Chair.
My pleasure.
This is urgent because the proof, the proof of that and the proof of this Lord Mayor's political interference in this is in the very letter that the Lord Mayor tabled in this chamber last week, responding to the campaign by the statement for Aspily Bart Melish to get this project going. In there, it shows the LMP council is holding up this project because of minor issues on the, um, design of intersections and the vertical grade of the overpass. In fact, this LMP Lord Mayor is demanding an incline grade that is... In fact, this LMP Lord Mayor is demanding an incline grade that is inconsistent with official standards and would make the overpass several hundred metres longer than is required, all of which has been already considered and reviewed thoroughly throughout the process. So Chair, we move this motion to call on this LMP Lord Mayor to quit playing politics with people's daily lives and let the Labor state government get on with delivering for our suburbs.
So councillor Cassidy, we have an urgency motion for, can you read it out for me again, please? I don't have a printout yet.
Thanks, it's been sitting around. The Brisbane City Council ends the delays and stop holding up the construction of the Beams Road rail overpass.
Thank you very much. All those in favour of urgency, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I welcome I welcome the debate from that side of the chamber, it's all pretty self-explanatory.
Sorry, can you move the motion again, please?
Yeah, of course. The Brisbane City Council ends the delays and stop holding up the construction of the Beams Road rail overpass.
Seconded. And I seconded.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Landis, point of order.
Mr Chair, as per section 422B of the Meeting's Local Law 2001, I move a procedural motion that the debate on the motion now before the meeting be adjourned and placed at the end of the agenda of the next council meeting. Seconded.
Hang on, can we just get through the councillors? Councillors? Councillor Cumming? Just because you're wearing a t-shirt doesn't doesn't stop you from, yes, we have a a procedural motion to adjourn, sorry, hold the motion over until the next council meeting, the end of the meeting. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy, and I think that was councillor Cumming. Can you please ring the bells? As we have majority councillors in the chamber, all those in favour of holding over the motion until the end of the next meeting, please raise your hand and say aye. Those against? Clerks, when you're ready, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and five against.
The motion has been held over until the end of the next meeting. Any further general business? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. I'll be very quick, and I'm going to speak about the Christmas markets and Tangleuma Eco Marines. On Sunday, we held our, in conjunction with Tuwong Art Space, we held some Christmas markets down at Quin Park, and I just wanted to congratulate the winners of the art exhibition competition. The adult winners were Ian Fangies, Kath Haynes and Marie Dorasami, and the children, congratulations to Anna Ortiz Pasadena from Tuwong State School. All of the miniature paintings were fantastic. And on to the Tangleuma Eco Marines, there were a few of our council colleagues there yesterday, including councillor Cumming, and I'm sure he was very impressed with the federal Member for Brisbane speech, Trevor Evans, who spoke about all the good work the federal government is doing with regards to minimising plastic wrapping and micros and so on and so forth. But I want to talk about what Brisbane City Council contributed to the fantastic programme, and that includes the, I'm just going to read this to you, it's the little award that they presented, it says, thank you, your contribution has inspired a new wave of environmental leaders. Why did we get that, Chair? Glad you asked. Because Brisbane City Council contributes to the programme every year, and in fact, this year, we increased our funding, which allowed the programme to roll out to more schools, and that means more students. I don't know how much the state puts into it, councillor Hammond, thank you for the question, but I can tell you that their their logo was not represented on the sponsors' board, so maybe it is zero. But this is where the future world leaders gather and contribute their ideas for saving the planet, and in my speech yesterday, I did mention that Brisbane City Council is Australia's largest council, and under Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinow, we're very big on sustainability, and that includes continuing our carbon neutrality, which we got in 2017, and we're Australia's largest organisation with a functioning landfill to actually be certified as carbon neutral. Our electric metros are going to be powered by renewable energy, we've got green waste bins available to residents, we do waste programmes in schools and kindies, which is always very popular, and this year, we're going, this financial year, we're going to do a FOGO trial through some of the parts of Brisbane. And Brisbane is Australia's biodiversity capital, we have koalas, kangaroos, platypus, dolphins, 10,000 hectares of land under management, and 4,000 kilometres of waterway, and that's like going to Sydney and back twice. But all of this requires cleaning, and we could not do it without the volunteers who participate, such as at your way, you've got men in the trees and so on looking after some of your waterways, and I'm going to put a plug in for a couple of Witten. But the Eco Marines are the ones who spread the message, there's about six from each participating school, 78 schools, and one of the teachers who spoke suggested that this is more highly regarded in the student population than being school captain. So that is a pretty cool position to get in a school, to be an Eco Marine ambassador, and and they are ably helped with our great team who looks after our 104 or more programme, and that is picking up two pieces of rubbish every week, it's 104 pieces, roll that out across Brisbane, and we'll have a particularly clean city. So thank you to the Eco Marines and to all the sponsors who support these future world leaders, they do a great job, and I'm thrilled that Brisbane City Council will continue to support the programme into the future.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Any further general business?
I beg your pardon?
Ah, sorry. My apologies, councillor Mackay. Is there any further general business? I declare the meeting closed.